Uh good evening everyone, welcome to the Tuesday June eleventh twenty twenty four meeting of the Town of Newcastle Town Board. Uh the board has been in executive session discussing matters of contracts, advice of council and uh hirings in certain departments. May I have a motion to adjourn the executive session and open the work session?
So moves.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we are now in our work session. We are going to start off with our town administrators quarterly project update.
Hey, thank you everybody. So um I tried to make it as legible as possible. Um I can also go through it as quickly as possible, I'll just try to hit the highlights for you. Um with regard to FEMA projects that are ongoing in town, our Mickle Dam removal project, uh phase two um of a four million dollar grant award is being considered by Westchester County to cover the removal and restoration of the dam area. Um uh Tectonic presented this project to the town board on May fourteenth and also to the ERB on May twentieth. So this project is is uh moving along really nicely. Um the other um major project that we're working with FEMA about is the pedestrian bridge replacement. So this was the bridge that was uh damaged in tropical storm S I A S. It's along um King Street by Douglas. Um FEMA has awarded um a little bit over uh a million dollars in federal funding um to the town of Newcastle to rebuild the Quaker Road footbridge. Um I'm sorry, according to this it's Hurricane Ida, so. Um we uh we have some other ongoing projects um that are in various stages of development. Uh the Byram Lake uh Road Culvert Replacement Project, we're still waiting on plans from our new engineering firm. Uh Shether Roads uh Slope Stabilization and Stormwater Quality, we're waiting for permits on that. Um are turning to water infrastructure projects, the North Bedford Road Pump Station. Um we have awarded the uh contract to rebuild the pump station to T A M Enterprises and council is in the midst of reviewing the required bonds for sufficiency and then we'll be re- ready to start. Um our trenchless water main, which is the replacement of an aging water main under the Metro North Railroad in Sawmill Parkwayes, um has shown some promising progress just recently. We actually have been able to obtain uh permits for the highway work. Emergency vehicles for boring work is a first step to design the project. Um the holdup appeared to be that DOT was seeking to uh grant us permits for the entire job and we weren't quite ready for it yet. Um we're just seeking to take boring soil samples of the area where we're gonna have to take it excavate. Um and that will that will determine the um the method by which we are able to take and replace the water main. So um it's an important project and uh we're glad to see that we've had some significant move movement on it now. Um. Our um water main replacement project on Meadow, Pine Cliff, Ridge and Alden. Um Pine Cliff Road, Ridge and Meadow legacy construction has been awarded the bid to replace the old six inch online water mains with eight inch ductile iron uh water mains and new hydrants. Um this will improve the fire safety and water pressure for the block. The project is expected to take six to seven months. H two M is our full-time inspector on the job. It's currently thirty percent complete with the water main installation on Pine Cliff and Ridge. We haven't yet started on Meadow. With regard to Alden and um Alden and Alden, D P W is actually doing the work, we're doing this in-house. Uh we are completing the replacement of the six inch online water main again with eight inch ductile iron um pipe. Uh the main is installed um and we've been pressure testing, that was as of June sixth. Um it passed, so we're waiting for bacterial testing. Um if we get approval from the health department, um we'll be able to put the main in service and we've got four service lines to be connected to the new main. So we're moving along really well on that as well. Um our generator, um our uh backup generator um is connected and the rental generator um has been returned, which is fabulous news. That was a thirty thousand dollar a month rental.
Yeah.
Um that was uh yeah, not anticipated, not planned and uh we're happy to give it back.
Uh that's okay.
Um there is a um a transfer switch that I believe that we're still waiting on, that job isn't quite complete, but we're uh we're really close. Uh the Millwood Water Treatment Plant, the roof uh replacement has been completed. Um well, yeah, uh installation's complete, we've got a two-year maintenance bond in place. Um excuse me, um the uh generator for the fuel tank replacement at the Millwood Water Treatment Plant um as well. The uh insulation installation was added to the project, it's been tested. Um and uh it it's not complete, but it is in service. So again, uh substantial work on that project as well. Um as the board is aware, we completed the chap pack roof and what this puts us in a position to do is to um uh do some research about um solar installation. Uh Sabrina has done a fabulous job along with uh with the assistance of S A B of securing some significant grants for us to be able to cover the cost of solar installation. Uh she's been working with Sustainable Westchester to create bid documents. Uh we hope to go out to bid for solar and perhaps battery storage as well. Um that's the good news on that project. Um let's see. Uh why don't we switch over to um sidewalks?
We were up to the chap pack with um the LEDs removal with grants.
We're on track.
Uh so um the LEDs is a is a project that we received funding for two years ago. Um we have not done the installation yet, we're hoping it's gonna be done this summer. We're waiting for the the uh facility to go dark before we take in place the um the interior lights with LEDs. The dimmable technology has advanced and leaps and bounds and so um our in-house electrician Dan has been waiting for a product that he feels most comfortable with and he thinks he found it. So uh we will be procuring those uh dimmable LED lights uh for the auditorium and we will we we're hoping to install them this summer, so we're on track. Um let's see. Ah um s- finishing up with chap pack. Um our bid specifications um have been finalized, I believe. Um and uh we have gone out to bid, we've released the bid uh for the drainage and the um uh the parking lot improvements at chap pack. Um it's going to make a significant difference when we have handicap parking alongside the building uh in the sawmill construction zone. Uh they're in the midst of uh raising the loop road, so we're hoping that uh um it's possible that uh uh s- some of the contractors that are currently working on the Toll Brothers project might also be interested in bidding on our top, which would be a great thing and we'd be able to, you know, use the that economy of scale and get some work done. So we're we're very hopeful that that we're coming to the end of the the road on the completion of those projects. Um let's see, uh Gedney Park we've completed, Millwood Park. Um we um we have installed a new playground with new swings. Uh we are in the midst of uh completing um the R F P for the ADA compliant path. It's scheduled to go out to bid at the end of this month uh with construction in late in August. Again, we were trying very hard not to have our construction interfere with the soft build programs scheduled at Millwood and we've been able to do that. Um also uh the tennis courts are being resurfaced and we will be installing a hitting wall at the back of the tennis courts. Um and we expect that by the end of the month, so we're moving along really nicely with that as well. Um chap line, we continue. Uh we have secured that five hundred thousand dollar grant. Um Sabrina is in the midst of finishing up a grant application, do you want to tell the board a little bit about that?
Sure, I don't know that this is on.
It's on.
It's on, okay, the light does not. Um I am applying for a federal um transportation grant for the entire length of the trailway. It's a fifteen point nine million dollar project. We have divided the project into three different phases so that at any time we could apply for monies for on a phase-by-phase basis with a starting point and an ending point that makes sense for somebody who wants to use the trailway. That's a little bit different than we've done in the past. For this particular grant, the minimum amount for a construction project was fifteen million. So rather than apply for a four million dollar or a or a five million dollar phase project, we looked at everything and said, you know what, let's go for the whole thing. We are gonna write into the grant, into the project narrative, um you know, the desire to, if they don't wanna give us the fifteen point nine, to at least give us something for a phase of the project, given that we have the five hundred thousand dollars. This federal grant is unique in that it it's not asking for a specific number of words per a question. It's giving you uh an outline of what you need to include in a project narrative that has to be between fifteen and sixty pages. So it's giving a little more leeway to tell the story, to tell the reason why we want the trailway, which is refreshing in the sense of telling somebody the benefits of this trailway for our community. So that grant application is actually due next week. Um working very diligently to make sure all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed. There's a resolution that you have before you tonight to help show the support for that.
Uh Sabrina, do you have a sense of what exactly they're looking for?
No, I do not.
In the in a grant and what?
I do not.
What kind of projects are they prioritizing? What goals do they, you know?
They ask you to, there there's a whole series of criteria. I mean, they they give you the point system, they give you the categories that you need to meet. Um you know, we are pretty strong in almost every category. The one category that time and again across all grant applications that we are not scoring very high in is need. We do not have a huge population that is labeled, that they label as underserved and that's our biggest challenge.
Is there a match requirement for this grant?
It's an eighty twenty.
Okay.
So we would need to provide twenty percent of that match.
Would that include the five hundred thousand dollars?
Um the five hundred thousand dollars, we have a fifty percent match for the five hundred thousand dollars.
No, no, I understand that, but all the the twenty percent.
We could use this federal money to match the state grant.
Not the other way around.
But not the state to grant, but not the state to grant the fed.
Go the other way around. Correct. Oh no, we we should be able to do that. We can use, because it's state and federal, you can match state and feder- you can match state and federal, you can't match federal and federal.
Oh okay, okay.
Or state or state.
Got it, okay.
So we should be able to match on both, so that five hundred thousand will be matched with if we get money for this and this grant, that five hundred thousand would go towards our eighty, our twenty percent match.
Yeah, but this um I know that we don't meet a need requirement the way they describe it, but it ticks off so many boxes in terms of environmental advantages, you know, getting cars off the road and health, it cannot, there's so much.
It does. There cannot make advantages, environmental advantages, recreation. I mean, yes, we we will score very high in all of those other categories. I cannot write a, I cannot score high in that one category that they ask us to.
Okay, score. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Sabrina.
Sure. Okay, um next um let's see, uh believe it or not, with the Millwood sidewalk, we're still waiting approval from New York State DOT on their for the land acquisition.
Believe it.
Uh it's it's just it it's just shocking.
Set of options.
If if I were to tell you that that this is monies that we secured in two thousand five for this project, yeah, I I wouldn't agree.
Wow.
Um we uh still have to do the um the proposed sidewalk R F P, uh West Orchard um Road Gedney Park to North County Trailway. That R F P is uh on the list of things to be to do. Um we uh have moved along with the proposed one twenty sidewalk extension to the south entrance of Wagon Road Camp, um as the board is aware. Um E D R D work study, they had a mid-block crossing, which we uh confident New York State DOT would not approve. Um so we asked them to go back and try to keep it all on one side of the road and we're waiting for that to come off um.
I'm sorry, Jill, which one, which one?
I'm sorry, that's the uh the one twenty sidewalk extension.
Oh, the wagon road, okay.
Right, to Wagon Road Camp. And as the board is aware, there are some village homes that uh present some substantial challenges to the um construction of a sidewalk along the road. Um so uh we'll we'll see. Uh next is, and I apologize, it 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 for whatever reason it got dropped off this list, but it's um the one seventeen extension to uh Elm Street and Salem. Um I um I have reached out to New York State DOT um asking whether or not there'd be any flexibility in their requirement of a five-foot snow shelf, five-foot uh sidewalk. Because again, this is an area where we've got village homes and, you know, taking ten feet of property um is it it makes it an impossible project. Um and I actually did get some encouraging uh feedback from New York State DOT. Um there is a section of sidewalk along uh the mobile station, one twenty into one um to one seventeen that is severely pitched, it's really settled poorly. And when we brought it to New York State DOT's attention, that they really have to replace that sidewalk, they proceeded to tell us, yes, you do. So it will be our responsibility to take and replace that sidewalk, but we're hoping that we might be able to uh sort of fold the replacement of that sidewalk into the installation of the new sidewalk that we're proposing, that goes all the way up to Salem, that would give the residents as far down, far south as um Chapacore Ridge an opportunity to be able to access town through a sidewalk, so.
And with the old portion that we would replace, would that be meeting the that ten foot?
It it wouldn't, it can't, it.
Okay.
So we what we would explain to the state is that, you know, this is only a three-foot sidewalk.
So we can establish that.
You know, it's it it's only got a one-foot snow shelf, might we be able to just continue it?
Yeah.
Do you know how often there's an exception granted?
I don't. Well, I, yeah, not very.
Not very.
I I.
But we have a fortuitous uh situation here.
Yeah, I I I have to tell you, so DOT is not, sidewalks is the is inevitably top on the list of what our residents ask for in terms of amenities.
Yeah.
Always, always.
But as far as liability goes, New York State DOT, it's not top on their list. And I'm confident that the requirement of a five-foot snow shelf, which gives pedestrians a a five-foot buffer between the lane of traffic and where somebody's walking along the truck route, is there intentionally, not just for the snow shelf storage, but to give you that separation. Because the liability is crazy.
But do do they understand that people are currently walking on the shoulders?
They would prefer, but they would prefer people not to walk. And when you throw the sidewalk, you're inviting them.
They don't wanna encourage it. Yeah.
Um and and so, you know, there's this conflict going on. So although, you know, we try to be very reasonable and rational when we talk to to DOT, it's not that they're not listening, it's just that that their their goals aren't our goals. But we're, we we carry on.
There are no. Fingers crossed on this one.
Yeah, um okay, it was actually, it was it was far more encouraging and writing than I anticipated, so all good. Um we've got some uh DOT projects within the town of Newcastle. Uh we've uh got some culvert replacements that are heading down the pike uh for the end of twenty twenty five into twenty twenty six. There's gonna be one along one seventeen Old House Lane. There's also gonna be one along the Sawmill Parkway. We've got a couple of Westchester projects that are coming along as well. The release sewer for Joan Corwin Way, um which is supposedly going out to bid fall of twenty twenty four and there will be construction in twenty twenty five. Um and the extension of the county trunk along one twenty and the town's water replacement, water main replacement. Um we're still waiting to hear on the uh grade crossing elimination at the Roaring Brook Road on the parkway.
Have we heard anything or just silence?
No, um I um I I have been in touch with Joe Strini, they are, they are working on it, but I don't know where this project falls in their priorities. There was a lot more communication with them earlier on, a little bit less so now. But they're they're still talking to us, they still take our calls, so I think that's a good thing.
What, can you refresh my memory, was there funding associated with that?
Um it was not a town project. It was a New York State federal project that did not involve any contribution by by the town.
Oh. But no, I understand, but I I thought the federal government was gonna provide funds for the state to do that, even if it's not our project in Philly.
It was a rate, it was an arrangement between New York State and the federal government.
Is it still in place?
We we didn't, that that the project wasn't approved.
Got it, okay.
Okay, um it was my understanding that the total funding for the program was a hundred million dollars and our project was sixty. Again, you know, when it comes to need, yeah. Um okay, um. I did just wanna move on to the the SAM grants. Um so a- at Amsterdam Park, um uh we, I'm I'm thrilled to be able to report that we received confirmation of the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar uh grant from uh Assemblyman Chris Verdic uh to install a septic or sewer at Amsterdam, create two ADA compliant bathrooms and, bless you.
That's awesome.
Um and to uh improve the fields that are that are there. Um and we are um actively working to uh to take and uh submit all the paperwork that the state's asking for on us, for us. Excuse me, um the Millwood Playground Tennis Courts, uh we've got a new playground installed. We we talked earlier about the tennis courts to be resurfaced, the hitting wall and the ADA compliant. Um the LED, um oh, the train station, um. This is so weird, I was sure I put in the air project and now I don't see it.
Is it the cameras at chap train station?
That's the one, it's the cameras at chap train station. So uh uh Assemblyman Verdic um has approved um monies for uh cameras um at the train station, both for our back parking lot, um around the train station and the entrance to uh Woodburn Avenue to help with police enforcement. Um we um I expect to have before the board on the twenty-fifth uh authorization to approve the award of that contract. We've been working with uh council. Um it's been a little bit dicey with our procurement policy, but I think we've got it down. Um and at that point, we will be repainting under the um under the bridge, um because we will have cameras all over there.
Yeah.
And the arts and culture, they will go forward from there.
Which could. We're very excited.
Very exciting.
It's great.
It's gonna look great. Um okay, um and I think that's really about um all we all uh all I have. Um the H V A C conversion um at the train station to heat pumps is complete. We thank Senator Harcom um for the fabulous project. So instead of an old oil tank and oil burner, we now have uh clean heat pumps giving uh heat and air conditioning at the train station.
Thank you so much, Jill.
Thank you, Jill.
That's quite a lot to go through.
Really quickly.
Appreciate it.
Any questions?
Sorry, there's, there's one update, I just wondered if you could um address the Annandale Engineering Studies?
Yep. Yes, so uh we presented the um um back in March, April, we had a presentation actually to Assemblyman Chris Verdic um by our engineering um assistant town engineer, uh Miguel Fabril.
This was the visibility, yeah.
Visibility and um sightlines and vegetation and uh we presented it to them, um uh so we we reviewed it with Assemblyman Verdic. He had some terrific feedback uh for us. We submitted it to New York State DOT along with um a cover letter indicating Assemblyman Verdic's support, asking them to take a look at the sightline deficiencies and having a number of uh suggestions for them, including um cutting back of vegetation on the north side of one seventeen and Annandale Corner. Um and the state came back to us basically saying that because of the lack of accident, um incidents of accidents at that intersection, um that it didn't meet the warrants for road correction, but that they would take a look at the um vegetation and see whether or not there was anything that they might be able to do. That vegetation is all on private property, which is part of the problem.
Got it.
Um we would have been happy with them writing a strong letter to the owner suggesting that they cut the vegetation back or asking, but.
That is a tricky intersection when you're trying to go south.
It's a very tricky intersection and and i- if you took a look at the study, it wouldn't surprise you at all to learn that the sight distances, both looking left and right, are well deficient from what the law requires today. That intersection never would have been built today.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
We're disappointed, we weren't really surprised, but we were disappointed, we put a lot of work into it.
Okay.
Thank you, Jill.
Move on to Sabrina and review the Maris Poll proposal?
Okay, um Sabrina, do you wanna to start us off?
Sure, sure. Um prior to the envision process that we have just completed, the town board um entertained a couple proposals from surveying companies. It was always the the intent that the information gathered through the envision process would be helpful in creating a survey that would be mailed to every property owner in the community. Um Maris Poll was the preferred consultant or preferred proposal after you interviewed them and they have come back with a revised proposal because it was approximately a year ago, um that you talked to them. The revised proposal um includes some of the, all of the same elements as previously discussed where a survey would be developed over several weeks in in working with the town board. Would take some of the information, the emphasis that was made during the envision process and turn that into survey questions. The town board would be involved with finalizing those survey questions and then Maris Poll would would um send surveys to every property owner. The proposal includes two different mailings. Um one is the actual survey itself, the other is a postcard reminder for people to respond to the survey. The response to the survey can be done online, it can be done in paper or it can be done via phone. Um so there's many opportunities for anybody to get involved, but it is going to be based on property ownership or people who live in the community.
Um okay, so you know, for anyone who has not been following this project, we had um a very extensive engagement session project with um Pace Land Use uh University and um Nexus Design. We had uh on the twenty-three acres of town-owned property surrounding the Chapacore Train Station, we had in-person engagement sessions, we had a tour, we had a dedicated website that allowed people to do virtual tours um and give ample feedback online. We had uh dedicated sessions with the senior community at the senior center, with Rotary, with the Chamber of Commerce. We're having the C C S D come and take tours and give feedback tomorrow. In fact, we're giving them two sessions to do that. And we we had a really, we've had robust engagement and participation. We had a lot of feedback and we're taking that feedback and uh we're going to have Maris create a survey to then reach every single resident in town with that survey, um using different modalities. You know, online mailing, on the website, you people receive a mailing. They'll have the opportunity to go to a website based on the information on the mailing. They'll have the opportunity to make a phone call, to send um replies by mail. You know, so you could do it virtually, online, by post office mail, through a website. So I think that we're making um every effort to reach everyone and get a really broad range of feedback from everyone.
What I really.
Are there any modalities that I that I missed? I mean.
No, I was just gonna comment.
Right, okay, go ahead, go ahead.
What what I really like about the approach here is that we've spent a lot of time getting um qualitative input from the folks that were able to come out and engage with us and this next step will really allow us to take that and turn it into a statistically significant um qualitative set of data to really consider um if and how we wanna move forward. So I I very much like this approach.
Yeah, same here, I mean, it's definitely um using the best, one of the best survey companies and um like you said, it is statistically um relevant. Um any other questions on this? No? Okay. Sounds good, yeah.
Great.
Thanks.
So, yes, okay, so next, um we're gonna be talking about electric vehicle charging stations with I N F Associates.
So great that Sabrina's here, 'cause she can get you to take team with me.
Yeah.
So um what we realized is that we have a a a number of locations in town that either um are, have a single port, like Amsterdam property, um Gedney, um and actually Allen Place, um where we have an opportunity to take and um expand our charging. and actually Allen Place, um where we have an opportunity to take and um expand our charging uh capabilities. Um, Amsterdam in particular is very intriguing to us because it's the only charging um stations on that side of town. And when you think about the uh the number of, you know, families that come and play soccer there, uh the fact that we're able to uh extend the seminity uh to our residents and also neighboring uh communities is a terrific thing. Um, same with Gedney, uh Gedney gets a tremendous amount of use, we only have one charging station there, so we'd like to be able to expand it. Um, and Sabrina, sorry, just refresh my recollection on uh.
That's okay.
Allen Place.
Yeah, on Allen Place, um that, good, that seems to be our our problem.
So. Yeah, so. So, so just to kind of uh flesh this out a little bit, Westchester County entered into an agreement with INF Associates. They are able to offer a program where uh EV charging stations would be no cost to the town. Okay, that's very important. Um, the the charging stations that are part of this agreement are the latest and greatest level-two chargers. There's a five-year maintenance agreement at no cost to the town and that's very important. Um, being the person that gets copied on all of the charging stations when there's problems, it's important that we have a company that we can rely on to fix them. Um, we provided three different locations for INF Associates to look at to determine whether or not they could provide no cost for EV charging stations. Um, in Amsterdam Park, we um they looked at prov- the provision of two dual ports at no cost to the town. At Gedney Park, there is currently one charging station there that is not operational. They will remove that charging station and provide two dual ports and one single ports for a total of five ports at no cost to the town. We looked at King Street or Allen in the Allen Place parking lot, there is one charging station there that it currently is not operational. It was a little bit difficult because that is a limited number of spaces in that parking lot, so they gave us two different options. Both options do cost the town in this instance because we are not providing enough new chargers to balance out the cost of replacing the existing charger. They said that um if we were to install two dual-port charging stations for a total of four ports, the proposal would result in a six thousand nine hundred and two dollar cost to the town. So that's taking up four spaces in that parking lot. The second proposal they provided was the installation of three dual ports, a total of six ports at a cost of one thousand six hundred and seventy-three dollars to the town.
And what about the maintenance?
Five-year maintenance. So they're all the same level-two charging station, level-two chargers with a five-year maintenance. The question before you, one is do you support Am- the proposals for Amstertan- Amsterdam and Gedney and authorize the supervisor to sign those proposals um uh as proposed? The third, the second question is, do you uh do you wanna install the chargers at Allen Place? And if so, do you prefer option one at sixty-nine hundred dollars, sixty-nine oh two?
How many spaces was that again?
What?
How many spaces? How many did it?
Um, that was installation of two dual-port chargers, four different port ports, which would be four spaces.
Mm-hmm.
Spaces. So you have to be charging.
Right.
So it means that if you don't have much of.
You take it your way.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then what's the other?
The other one was three dual ports, total of si- or three, three with six ports.
But spaces, right.
Six spaces and that was one thousand six hundred and seventy-three.
The problem is is that six spaces is a lot of spaces for that little parking lot. And so that's what what sort of gave us pause.
And 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 particularly given, particularly given that there are EV chargers in the train station lot.
Right.
Yeah, but they're not.
Those usually used dur- during, I think during the day, they're.
Yeah, and you have to have a a commuter permit in order to use them, so it's it's not the same population that's that's using it, so.
Yeah.
And and what about the ones at Bell, near near the Bell School?
So if those are the ones that are in back of uh uh is there the Sabrina parking lot?
Near the Bank of Laramie.
Of course.
Yeah, yeah, they're they're open to anybody, they we just installed them last year.
Yeah, those. Yeah. Yeah.
How many were there, how many are there?
At least two, uh.
There's two, two ports.
Two ports, so four, four spots.
When you say that they have.
I mean, could we offer, oh, I'm sorry, hold on a second, could we offer more in that area? I mean, I know that it's not exactly Allen Place and people are not used to walking, you know, they wanna drive to exactly where they're going, but that's still, it's still in town.
I think both of those parking lots, tho- both of those parking lots are 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 limited.
They're equally limited.
They're equally limited and the the opportunity with the no cost or low cost was to replace the currently non-operational charger.
The requirement that someone is charging while they're parked there, that is our requirement, that is county.
Yes.
No, that's your requirement.
No, it's ours.
We currently enforce that how?
Yes. With.
Tickets.
Tickets.
I mean, could we do something like if we had six spaces, allow like fifteen-minute or thirty-minute parking for a non-EV?
We we can't force it.
Okay.
That that's the problem. So we either require people to charge or we don't require people to charge and if you're not gonna require people to charge, then we shouldn't have chargers because people are just gonna, you know, park there, yeah, park there, monopolize a spot and people will charge there.
And you know, you could also, a third option is to not do anything about that parking lot right now.
Six just seems.
That's what I'm thinking.
Excessive.
Right.
Because of its use, not that it's not a good idea, it just seems that's too many.
A and.
I agree, yeah.
Yeah, and and this is what we stumbled all.
Obviously.
For that size parking lot.
Yeah.
That's why you have a choice on that one.
Yeah, that's why we separated it out, if everything was no cost, we wouldn't have put it as a discussion item.
Right.
How much do the, does it, the installation of a dual-port charger cost if we weren't part of this program?
Oh, it's much more expensive.
Thirty thousand or something?
Yeah, it's ridiculously.
Or. Okay, so so there is still quite a bit of benefit if we were to take up the uh the two.
Yes. Yes, but there is an advantage of cost savings for the town wi- under either scenario. And right now that charging station is not operational and it's not under a warranty.
Do we have to decide today about that, about Allen Place?
You you don't need to decide about that one, I would encourage you to decide to to, if you're interested in Amsterdam and Gedney, to approve those today.
I think those are easier ones, I mean, I I hope everyone agrees with that, but.
Yeah.
Um, bec- and only because once the town board signs off on the proposals, they go back to INF Associates and then they get put into the lineup at Westchester County.
Thank you, yeah.
And it may be some time, 'cause this is processing between the INF Associates, the consultant and Westchester County.
Right, it's all.
Well, I don't wanna say no right off the bat, but I would like to take some time to consider.
Yeah.
Third proposal.
Mm-hmm.
Well, yes, so.
Well, you ha- and you have both proposals in your packet.
Right, so can we pr- I I I would prefer that the board approve the Gedney and Amsterdam tonight so we can get in the queue.
I'm comfortable with that.
Yes.
Um, yeah.
I am too.
Yeah, I I would prefer that to, um.
Okay.
Nice to have victory.
How is it, how is it in our?
In our parks. Yeah, we'll make sure it's it's appropriate, our resolutions, okay.
Do we need, we need to amend the resolution?
Um. So if the, with the board's permission, I'll quickly go through the administrative items.
Okay.
We've got being the claims, we've got authorization to settle the twenty eighteen um to twenty twenty-three tax or chariery proceeding on matter of Jacobson. Um, we've got authorization to solicit bids for water maintenance materials, these are for nonextended contract items. We've got authorization to approve a formal letter of permission for restoration of the Hedy graveyard, this is uh Ray Williams's request to us. Um, authorization to release the letter of credit uh for Sunshine Children's Home and we'll be accepting a cash bond agreement in this place. Um, we've got authorization to support the submission of the grant application that Sabrina spoke to you earlier about. And um a resolution um authorizing the execution of a memorandum of understanding relating to the Community Choice Aggregation Program. And that's all I have for the work session.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So um may I have a motion to close the work session and open up our town board meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we're officially beginning our town board meeting. Um, let's see, any announcements, Jill?
No, I have a couple of just housekeeping um items that we're on.
Go ahead.
Yeah, we're on summer hours, which means that on uh through Labor Day, we close three fifteen on Fridays. Um, we will be uh closed uh on next Wednesday, uh June nineteenth. Uh, our recycling center will be closed as well. However, Santa Pro's collection for refuse and uh recycling uh will be unchanged. So Santa Pro is collecting as usual, it's just that our recycling center will be closed. Um, we don't have a meeting next week because it's uh grievance day and so we don't have a room to meet in, so we're taking advantage of that. Um, and uh our parking permit system, our new one, we expect to roll out on July one. We wanna thank everybody for their patience while we uh uh try this new technology and we really wanna thank Christina Papes for dragging us into the twenty-first century. It's 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 about time we upgraded our parking, so this is gonna be very nice.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're staying for it now, but it'll be better. Thank you for your patience.
Alright, so um I'm gonna give hopefully a brief supervisor's report. I did wanna talk about the closing out of Envision, but we discussed that amply already. Um, we had a wonderful pride flag raising ceremony on uh June first. Uh, was well attended and very nice as usual and I want to let people know that we're having a gun violence awareness rally this Friday. This is June uh is Gun Violence Awareness Month and you can see we're all wearing orange, we'll be taking a picture. Uh, but we're having um this event on Friday, this Friday, the fourteenth, at seven PM at the gazebo. It's going to be right after the Horace Greeley Senior Car Parade in town. So, hope you could come to both. Uh, I just wanna talk um very briefly about um our community for a bit. I've talked a lot, starting in January, at the beginning of my tenure, about bringing about a sense, a better sense of unity to our town. Um, there are three things I wanna talk about, one is the very recent past, one is the present and one is going to be in in the future. So, in the recent past, on Sunday, we had um a really powerful event on on June ninth. It started at four in the morning, between four and six AM in the morning. This was uh what we're calling a break the hold into the light sunrise walk. Break the hold is a foundation that is based in Pleasantville and it was started by a family uh following the loss of their son by suicide. Uh, Pleasantville has had a walk like this for six years and they get about seven hundred people, it's very meaningful. So, someone came to me uh to do a sister walk in solidarity in Newcastle. I thought this was a really important thing to do and we had our inaugural walk this Sunday. In the wee hours of the morning, we had a hundred people show up. Um, it was a truly powerful, powerful moment. Uh, and I want to thank especially Akiko Roy, who came to me with this idea and gathered her friends together and put this together very quickly. I also wanna thank um those who helped her, Suzanne Jelinas, Beatrice Hallock, Sue McShane, Stacy Science and Michelle Turenczak. Um, this was about mental health awareness, education and suicide prevention and it really revealed a great need in our town, so we came together in solidarity. And as your town supervisor, one of the most important issues to me has been to build a sense of community and bring people together. Um, the, having a more compassionate and unified com- uh community is really important. Uh, I think that things have devolved, especially with social media, on Facebook, people go at each other in very harsh ways and I think that we have to sort of reclaim our social spaces, come out of social media and come together in person in town. Um, so I talked about the immediate past, something we will be doing today that I think is an important and powerful thing and maybe somewhat controversial. We're going to be seating a committee on inclusion and belonging, again, to build a sense of community in our town. Um, this is a committee that will take a stand against all form of hatred and hate speech and discrimination toward anyone or any group. Um, I wanna touch a little bit on the fact that geopolitical issues have been on everyone's mind in town. And there are a lot of issues that we cannot resolve, but we want to recognize that we respect and care for one another in this community as families and friends and neighbors despite our differences. And we know that when we all come together, there's a lot of peace and goodwill that exists here. Um, so we are appointing people on this committee who want to make this a reality and bring us to a more peaceful place. So I'm asking everyone very loudly and clearly to support these efforts. Um, we've had a lot of controversy on these committees. We had a s- committee on race inequity, we had a committee on race equity and inclusion and um, you know, these things tend to end with a lot of controversy. So I'm asking people to be more supportive, to be more kind, to be more open and if there are things you disagree on, to be more curious and uh ask questions in a more open way. So, we will be seating people who seem to be on opposite sides of issues. And again, this may seem controversial, but these are people who have said that they want to work together. Um, and when we see that happen, it's time to really sit up and listen and not allow ourselves to remain into our known and comfortable echo chambers. It's really time to open up and reach out um and find the courage to to come together. So I'm asking people to support these very courageous, thoughtful and generous people who are willing to do this work. Um, we'll be appointing them later, so um you'll be hearing more about this as time goes along. And the um, something for, to look forward to into the future, uh, the Holocaust in Human Rights Committee has an initiative that is Get to Know Your Neighbor's Bench. This is more of a work in progress, they're thinking of setting up a bench at the farmer's market uh and very, this should happen in the fall, uh in a very casual way to sort of invite people, I suppose they'll have someone sit at the bench and it's an invitation for people who are just around to come and sit down and have a conversation with someone that you don't know, get to know your neighbor in person. So, they're going to begin this in the fall and you will learn more about it, will get more information. But this is something that can happen in the fall, um, you know, spring, summer and fall and they're thinking of a different format uh for the winter. But I think it sounds pretty interesting, uh so you'll be hearing more about this Get to Know Your Neighbor's Bench. Um, and that's all I have for my supervisor's report. Okay. And with that, we have a few proclamations for today and I wanna read. We have a, an Arbor Day proclamation, which is um retroactive, we should have done it last month. We will have um a gun violence awareness proclamation, a pride month proclamation and a National Caribbean American Heritage Month proclamation. Uh, with the Heritage Much Month proclamations, we had committed to do all the ones that are recognized by the federal government. Last month, we recognized Jewish-American Heritage Month and Asian-American, Native Pacific and Native uh Pacific Islander uh Heritage Month, so this month will be National Caribbean Heritage Month. So we have four pro- proclamations to read, um, and I'm going to ask all of you to take one of them and and read them.
Yeah.
So Holly, if you would like to take the Arbor Day proclamation?
I would appreciate that.
Wait, I don't know if we have.
Where where is it? I don't see it in the package.
They are in the packet. I can pass it along, it's easier.
Yeah, sorry, I I only.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
How about?
I'll read Arbor Day.
I'm going to try.
Arbor Day? I'll have it. Uh, sorry, sorry. Arbor Day.
On page eighty-five.
Oh, oh, oh.
Eighty-five.
Here it is, here it is.
Oh, okay, that's thank you.
Beat each of it.
Sorry, Jill.
Go ahead, okay.
Whereas Arbor Day was first observed in eighteen seventy-two with the planting of more than one million trees in Nebraska and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout, through the nation and the world and whereas twenty twenty-four is the one hundred and fifty-second anniversary of National Arbor Day, whereas trees are renewable resource and help to reduce erosion, moderate temperature, lower heating and cooling costs, clean the air and provide habitat for wildlife. clean the air, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees in Newcastle increase property value, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. Whereas trees wherever they are planted are a source of joy and renewal. Now therefore be it resolved that the town board in Newcastle retroactively proclaims Friday, April twenty sixth, twenty twenty four as twenty twenty four's Arbor Day in the town of Newcastle. Be it further resolved that the town board urges all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands and to plant and care for trees in furtherance of happiness and well-being of this and future generations. And I think we can make it every day Arbor Day.
Exactly, thank you Holly.
Second.
Okay, it is retroactive, we missed it, but we thought it was nevertheless important to state our commitment to this. Um okay, now we have uh June is Gun Violence Awareness Month, and we have a proclamation for that.
Whereas every day dozens of Americans are killed by gun violence, leaving countless friends, family members, and loved ones heartbroken and traumatized and entire communities living in fear of experiencing or witnessing gun violence. And whereas Americans are twenty-five times more likely to die by gun homicide than people in other developed countries. And whereas in twenty twenty four alone, there have been more mass shootings than days in the year, with more than one hundred and ninety mass shootings so far that have killed hundreds of people and injured even more, according to the Gun Violence Archive. And whereas gun violence has serious implications for victims, survivors, and their communities, and includes but is not limited to gun suicides, gun homicides, domestic violence involving a firearm, officer-involved shootings, and unintentional shootings. And whereas cities and towns across the nation, including the town of Newcastle, New York, are working to end senseless gun violence. And whereas protecting public safety in the communities we serve is the town board's highest responsibility. And whereas support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand in hand with keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories. And whereas National Gun Violence Awareness Day is commemorated on the first Friday of June this year, on June seventh, which honors the memory of Medea Pendleton, who at age fifteen in twenty thirteen was tragically shot and killed in broad daylight one week after performing at President Obama's second inauguration. Medea's friends asked people to wear orange, a symbol of human life, in remembrance of all victims and survivors of gun violence. And whereas throughout the entire month of June, nationally recognized as Gun Violence Awareness Month, we are asked to renew our commitment to end gun violence, vowing to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our children, families, and communities safe. Now therefore be it resolved that the members of the town board of the town of Newcastle to hereby proclaim the month of June twenty twenty four as Gun Violence Awareness Month in the town of Newcastle and urge residents to support their community's efforts to prevent the tragic events of gun violence to foster a secure environment for all.
Okay, thank you, Holly.
Um.
Pride Month Proclamation. Whereas. Pardon me. Whereas the town of Newcastle, New York, upholds the value of dignity and dignity of each person and champions the rights, freedoms, and equality of all individuals and families. And whereas all are welcome to the town of Newcastle to live, work, play, and deserve to feel a sense of belonging, inclusion, and equality in a place to call home where they are safe, happy, and supported by friends and neighbors. And whereas the town announces prejudice and unfair discrimination based on age, gender, identity, gender expression, race, color, ethnicity, religion, marital status, national origin, sexual orientation, abilities, socioeconomic status, or physical attributes as an affront to our fundamental principles. And whereas Pride Month commemorates the Stonewall uprising in New York City, which took place in June of nineteen sixty-nine, when lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, plus, and allied friends took a stand for human rights and dignity and fought against police harassment and discriminatory laws that have since been declared unconstitutional. And whereas L G B T Q plus people have fought for equal treatment, dignity, and respect and have achieved significant milestones, ensuring that future generations of L G B T Q plus people will enjoy a more equal and just society. And whereas L G B T Q plus people still face disparities in employment, healthcare, education, housing, and many other areas central to the pursuits of happiness in the United States. And whereas the town of Newcastle recognizes the valuable cultural, civic, and economic contributions of the L G B T Q plus community, which strengthen our social welfare. And whereas it is imperative that young people in our community, regardless of sexual orientation, gender identity, and expression, feel valued, safe, empowered, and supported by their peers and community leaders. And whereas despite being marginalized, L G B T Q plus people will continue to celebrate authenticity, acceptance, and whereas the town of Newcastle reaffirms its commitment to standing in solidarity with L G B T Q plus individuals and families in their ongoing struggle against discrimination and injustice. Now therefore be resolved that the members of the town declare the month of June two thousand twenty-four as L G B T Q plus Pride Month in the town of Newcastle, and urge residents to recognize the contributions made by members of the L G B T Q plus community and to achieve a part of me to and to actively promote the principles of equality, liberty, and justice.
Thanks, Jeremy. And uh John?
National Caribbean American Heritage Month, June twenty twenty four. Whereas National Caribbean American Month is celebrated every June to honor and recognize America's rich and diverse cultures, which includes the Caribbean American population. And whereas during National Caribbean American Heritage Month, we celebrate the contributions of the millions of people across our nation with Caribbean heritage who believe in our nation's most sacred values of opportunity and freedom. And whereas in June two thousand five, the House of Representatives unanimously adopted H Congress seventy-one, sponsored by Congresswoman Barbara Lee, recognizing the significance of Caribbean people and their descendants in the history and culture of the United States. And on February fourteenth, two thousand six, the resolution similarly passed the Senate, culminating a two-year bipartisan and bicameral effort. And the proclamation was issued by President George W. Bush on June sixth, two thousand six. And whereas we celebrate the achievements and dreams of the millions of people of Caribbean origin now living in the United States, while honoring the shared history of joy and perseverance that has united and enriched life across our region for centuries. And whereas we recognize that there is no single Caribbean American identity and that the mix of cultures, languages, and religions live across the United States and the islands reflects the diversity of spirit that defines the American his- uh story. And whereas Caribbean Americans have played pivotal roles in American history, figures such as Alexander Hamilton, who was born in Nevis, and Jean Baptiste Poirot du Sable, a Haitian recognized as a founder of the city of Chicago, are just a few examples. Today, Caribbean Americans continue to excel in various fields, including arts, politics, sports, and academia. And whereas from the Caribbean Americans who helped build our country from the ground up to those who have only just arrived, they have all believed in the possibilities our country has to offer and strengthened diverse fabric of our nation. And now therefore be it resolved that the town board of the town of Newcastle hereby declares and proclaims the month of June as Caribbean American Heritage Month in the town of Newcastle in the state of New York.
Thank you, Jen, that was a lot of uh proclamations for this month. Um I wanna say that the National Heritage, American Heritage Months, uh the proclamations uh will be set just one time. And now we've established those months as those months in Newcastle. So in the future, we can celebrate them, but we don't have to read the proclamations every year. Okay, just wanna say that. Um okay, thank you, everyone, and now we have come to our public comment. This is not the public hearing yet. Um we're having a public hearing after after public comment on the Indian Brook Porton Ford watershed protection overlay district. This is public comment for uh topics other than that. So anyone in the audience, please come up and then we'll take people online. Hello, even though we know you, uh state your name.
Hello, wonderful people.
Hello, you still have to state your name and where you live, even though we know.
No, I will. My name is John Earlicky H R L I C H, and I am privileged to live in this town for twenty-five years. So I thank you so much for for all you do, and that's really the essence of most of my comments today. Im- imagine to be in a town which does so much, gets it done, gets it done under budget or in budget, according to the budget, that can execute um just the myriad numbers of 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 projects that you discuss is uh discuss today. I'm not gonna repeat them all because it's it's just such a lengthy list that you deserve an enormous amount of credit. And I, and I hope the entire town um just says thank you because totally amazing. And the people that are sitting here, sitting here, to some extent there, people in the back, people over here, are the ones that get it done. You would think that they're miracle workers, but they just work well for the town and for the individuals. So for all of this, I I wanna thank, this person over here has got a lot to do. And deserves an enormous amount of credit. So I wanna say thank you uh just for all of the completed projects and 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 other things. Um so I do I do appreciate that. The second thing that I wanted to bring up is as thank yous is to our area organizations that have accomplished so much for so many. And um as a Mount Kiskiwa member and so forth and so on, we have always invited them to speak. And we will continue to to do that, uh Neighbors Link. And every one of these I have also personally contributed to because they help. Because they they help, and it's not just picking up people who are sleeping in the fields, but so much of what they're doing, and translations, and welcoming, it's all about. Uh another one that folks may or may not be aware of, uh the Community Center of Northern Westchester. Um they're they're my, I'm sorry I can't, you know, put these, I would be glad to distribute anything just for anybody so that they they know. So I really, really want to to thank you. Nextly, the next point is a question. Uh can we and how can we in order to keep these projects going? We all know about the Chappaquaaf Performing Arts Center, Chappaq Act, uh they do a great job. Uh you fund them in so many ways, but also individuals can fund them. So what I would like to ask, is there a way that we can set up non-for-profits to help uh cover the costs um in a sense like Chappaq Act, but without getting the the town involved so that they have to do it? Someone can make private contributions to these, as I can contribute to Neighbors Link, as I can contribute to these other organizations. Let us see, perhaps think about how to create N N F Ps for the town projects to do it. It could be something as simple as the train station resurrection fund or something like that. It could be uh as simple as the sidewalk sidewalks for every one project. Uh these, and and I don't wanna go through all of those things that you talked about, but the parks and recreation obviously have done done a lot as participatory. So I would like to put that uh for your consideration and to see if it's worthwhile for the town board to get involved with. I very much would like to do it, and I would certainly personally support any effort to do that. Uh I know it's been a while since I came here, but I gotta bring this one up because it affects everybody in town. Power supply. I know Con Edison, their first name is Con, and they're not X, they're just Con. But boy, oh boy, those power bills are really impossible uh to understand. And so I have a couple of questions related to town board's involvement in in power supply. One, we know we have one alternative um supplier, major one, for for power. Do we have anything else, one that is is not? Is there any competition for for Con Edison to supply power uh to us? And I know the wiring is substantial, there's uh much there. I'm not gonna blame Tom Thomas Edison, he did a good job. But we have to move forward from that. So I would like to put that out there as a question. Is that what can we do to moderate our 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 power costs for town of Newcastle residents? Um and I and I and I wanna thank you, thank you uh s- s- so much. And I also wanna ask the town board, is there any way to request and secure rate and power cost reductions? If so, how? So with that said, I've talked a long time, I just wanted to express my appreciation to all of you who do so much, and you all. And uh any way that we as residents can help? Um and the, yeah, just to resurrect a another point that I brought up earlier today. I would like to help uh create a way of telling this entire town how much you do, what you've gotten done. I have gotten so many group requests, people ask me, of all people, uh you know, well, what's the town doing about this? How can we do this? What did they achieve on this? You've got such a great story! And this guy helps, you know, getting things out. But I think we can get it out in 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 more detail. So what can we do to publicize all the wonderful things that the town and town departments are doing? And with that, uh let's think about it, I'm here to help. Have a great day.
Thank you so much, John, thank you for your very thoughtful um thoughtful um suggestions and questions. We'll take all of that into consideration.
Thank you.
Um anyone else from the audience on anything other than the public hearing topic?
I know you know me, Nicole Richey.
How about Nicole, tell us who you are?
And John, I don't know how long you said you had the privilege of living here, but I had the privilege of living here in Newcastle since nineteen forty-nine.
That beats me by a lot.
Um I think um Bench, get to know your neighbor is a great idea. Um I was listening to the work session on Zoom, so I didn't I wa- I didn't hear clearly what the decision, if a decision had made been made about the um E V chargers for uh Getney and Amsterdam. If you put that on hold, I couldn't hear well.
We're going to go forward with those, and we're putting the "L" in place on hold.
Oh, okay, great. And the other piece of it that I didn't hear was if they're gonna be marked for E V charging only, yeah?
Uh yes.
Okay, cuz I passed by Millwood Park on my way over here, where there are two clearly marked spots, stencils on the parking spaces. And of course, one person is charging their car and the other person is not. That's very frustrating.
Yeah, enforcement is an issue.
And of course, I know enforcement's the the issue, but at least if they're stenciled and marked, then if an officer does happen to go by, there's a reward. Great, thanks, I applaud that.
Thank you, Nicole.
Thank you, Nicole.
Um anyone else in the audience? Yes. Hi.
Um nice to see all of you, I only know Jeremy, nice to see you again. Uh Cynthia Manuturi, one hundred Glendale Road. Uh we will be talking about the overlay, and um this has been asked of the town board before. The residents of the West End have an Austining mailing address. And if we're going to focus so much on the West End and the overlay and so forth, it's been asked before whether the town can look into changing our address to Newcastle. Because as a community, we are part of Newcastle, and it's very confusing on the West End. I know there's a procedure to go through, um but we'd like you to consider it. I'd like you to consider it, how to go through that.
We've heard that.
Yes, I know.
Um heard that before, I've heard um different opinions on that. Some people I heard were upset about the the suggestion.
Well, could you have a public call or a few on that before moving forward?
Carrying a few on that. I I I think it would be great to hear from people, to hear what they would like.
Or even a polling of the West End for how they feel about it.
But no one um in town has a Newcastle P O address.
Right.
It's either Chappaqua, Millwood, and you know, the other surrounding towns in New- surrounding P Os in Newcastle, Austining, Yorktown, Bedford, and uh Armac.
Right, so we're now a same town. Right, so we're not the same town originally.
So I wa- I just wonder what um what your thoughts are anyhow. Or if you if you haven't really thought about it, that's okay too. But I don't think the PO would be Newcastle, what?
Well, we're not Austining, so I don't I don't know what that's, I mean, I don't know what that's correct title would be.
What would you consider? So it's Austining now for you? Yeah.
We belong to Newcastle, Millwood belongs to Newcastle, Chappaquahepa belongs to Newcastle, so
Right.
something that connects us to the right town.
Yeah, so that would be that everybody, everybody's address would have to change. Yeah, yeah, I mean, I hear you. I think it would be great to be more connected and identify, but um so many, so many considerations.
Right.
And so many opinions and um
It'd be great to have a structure for you.
Yeah, the lines have been drawn from the beginning of time. This way, school districts are drawn in different different jurisdictions or you know, the Chappaquahepa School District has people in the town of Mount Pleasant. I mean, the jurisdictions are very tangled. And um, but I hear what you would like to try and do and I I I can totally understand it. I'm just afraid that there are so many complications once you start to really think about it.
I have no control.
Just complication anywhere.
So I Yeah, and to some extent, there are things that we don't control as well.
Yeah, we might, I I think a lot of this may actually originate from the postal service.
Yes.
Um, and I know that somewhere I lived previously, they were able to petition to the postal service to get um an alternate title
Yes.
um granted, so you could have it delivered to either the town name or the subregion that they had to find. Um, so it's
I mean, honestly, if somebody
Well, some questions, I think.
Well, you know what that would do, oh, sorry.
If somebody write
Um, that would confuse things even further because you could have neighbors with two different addresses. You could have someone with the Austining and your neighbor might choose to have Newcastle. And it would, you know, it would create, I think, further
Well, if 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 you write a letter to me and you give my address, but Newcastle, New York, and the same zip code, it arrives.
Ah, okay.
So. Cause the post office knows.
Something to think about, but thank thank you for suggesting, yes.
Thank you. Thanks.
Hello, I'm David Valdez, I live on Glendale Road. On the topic of addresses, I would just like to offer the following. Number one, addresses reside in the power of the community. The post office does not grant or give addresses. If a developer develops a new subdivision, the town names the street and gives the addresses. The post office does not do that. So it is, right now, we have a designated Austining address. I will tell you, as a resident of Newcastle, when I tell people that I live in Newcastle and then they ask for my address, whether it's at a store or anything else, nice, oh, you live in Austining. No, I don't live in Austining, we live in Newcastle. It's very confusing. It, so one thing that I wanna throw out at this meeting, why don't you rename all the Austining addresses that are in Newcastle, Chappaquahepa Hills? Because it would allow the community and the leadership here to remember that we're part of Chappaquahepa and part of Newcastle.
You didn't tell us about this.
I did, and I outlined how the rules work and I gave you the link to the postal service who says it is with you five people can change our address out of vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello?
Hello?
Um, yes, so hang on a second, is there anyone else in the audience who would like to make a general public comment? Yes, we have one more.
That's my daughter, she wants to ask you something.
Oh, yes, but would you like to ask?
Yeah. Yeah.
I I see her, but I take people in who are here in person first.
Yeah.
I will I will get to her. Um, anyone else in the audience?
Because I am having the same situation, I mean, I have all addresses for Austining and I am paying taxes to here.
Would you like to come up to the microphone?
It's the same problem, yeah.
If, okay.
The same problem.
Um, we have Yolanda Zinin online. Please unmute yourself and you can make your comment. Just please identify yourself and where and
Yes, hi.
We have
Yes, I'm Nancy Jane, my mom is there, Yolanda Zinin, twenty Alapartis Road. Um, and I just wanna also echo the same concerns that the previous people were saying in regards to changing the address. I mean, our taxes are very high, so wanna also understand the impact that this would have on our taxes. And then, um, absolutely, if we continue the address, I would like that as well.
Okay, thank you. Um, next we have Joanne, please, um. I don't see a hand raised, but I see Joanne, I know, would you like to make a comment?
Uh, I I'm not speaking comments, there's some speaking comments on the overlay that I if I don't just answer it, you coming in the next session. I'm not speaking comments, there's some speaking comments on the overlay.
Okay.
You're coming in the next session.
You're correct, you're correct, okay. Thank you, anyone else for public, general public comment? No, okay, so we are now going to open the public hearing. May I have a motion to correctly, to open the public hearing on the Indian Brook Croton Gorge Watershed Protection Overlay District law?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so let's see, before we take public comment.
We have, um, I have index cards back there, if anyone wants to speak, if they could take an index card with your name on it and then so we can track it.
Okay, did everyone hear that? Please, everyone wishing to speak, please write your name on the index card, your name and address and bring it up here to the table to Christina and she'll pass it to us.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sabrina, do you wanna start us off with?
There's also a, I I just wanna note, there's also a handout on the table of a chart you may be interested in.
Okay, did everyone hear that? There's a chart there, please take the chart to refer to it. You may be interested in looking at the chart as um we have an initial dis- discussion. You know, um, I didn't see the chart myself, is it in the packet?
I, Jill, hi, I don't know, she she sent it to me.
I was looking. We don't have it. Um
But I can't
Jill, you know, we don't have the chart.
Did you turn on the chart?
We don't have it.
If you're calling
I thought it was in in the packet.
I thought it was too.
I didn't, I didn't see it, yeah.
Yeah.
Is it?
Yeah, but it's not.
No.
No. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
It should be page ninety-seven of the packet.
Thank you Lauren. Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep, there it is, page ninety-seven. Yeah, sorry Jill, yes.
Thanks Lauren.
Thank you Lauren. Okay, Sabrina, do you wanna start us off, Lauren?
Sure, so um, tonight, I'm gonna talk to you about the Indian Brook Croton Gorge Inter Municipal Watershed Protection Overlay Protection Zone or Overlay District. Just to start, um, this area covers portions of five municipalities. Uh, the town of Portland, the town of Newcastle, both the town and the village of Austining, as well as the village of Croton on Hudson. So the town of Newcastle, along with the town of Portland, sit at the headwater, what's called the headwater area of this watershed. In two thousand seven, two thousand eight, Westchester County, with funding from the state, worked with the five municipalities to create what wa- what was known back then as the Indian Brook Croton Gorge Watershed Watershed Conservation Action Plan. There were five goals of that plan. Protect and restore natural resources, they're listed on the screen. Develop and implement stormwater management practices that will protect water quality or improve water quality. Promote sustainable development throughout the watershed, um, through land use regulations and environmental regulations. Preserve and protect fish wildlife in significant habit habitat and educate the public. These were the five action strategies. All of the municipalities in this watershed at that time adopted this plan. It was part of their impetus to implement the plan through local land use regulations and at that time educate the public. To just kind of give a sense of what the land area in Newcastle looks like. In the Indian Brook watershed, um, it is completely single-family residentially zoned. Um, it is our two-acre zoning district, which is our largest residential zoning district. Because it is zone two acres does not mean that every property is two acres. That is, it means that you may have fourteen acres, but your zoning is two-acre zoning. Um, we sitting at the headwaters have single-family land use unless the town, the any of the town boards, the planning board, the town board or the zoning board has issued what is known as a special use permit. We have one um property in this, I don't know if it's in this watershed, um, the Sunshine Children's Home, which is a special use permit. The impetus to create the overlay protection zone came directly from that conservation action plan. It was really spearheaded by the town of Portland who contacted the five, the remaining four municipalities because the intention was to try and create a single level of protection throughout all of the different municipal entities in this watershed. Newcastle was the only municipality that had a higher level of protection as compared to the other municipalities. So it was very, um, Newcastle was seen as the model. You know, we, you know, for example, have a hundred and fifty-foot oh uh wetland buffer right now today in our over, uh, in our wet, in our wetland over or environmental overlay zone. Every other municipality had was brought up to our standard. So a lot of the components of this legislation reflect our existing code. The applicability of this legislation is all new land use construction or subdivision within the watershed. If you have a house and a yard, a shed, you can still have your house, your yard, your shed, no matter where it is on your property. This is not intended to make something non-conforming or to make you tear it down. Um, or restrict you from making repairs. I'm gonna go through a summary of some of the requirements and how they compare to Newcastle's requirements. The information I'm presenting in this slideshow is also contained in the chart that I asked you to pick up in the back of the room in the chart that you have in your packet. So today, if you were to subdivide your property, if you have a single-family home and you have ten acres of land, you would most likely come, you would have to come to the town's planning board and apply for a subdivision application if you wanted to add more than one, more than the existing home that sits on that property. The planning board today would encourage you to undertake a conservation subdivision. Okay, that's something that all subdivisions that come in, the planning board asks people to do. Because the planning board is looking for you to protect the number of trees you take down, looking for you to protect the steep slopes on your property, if there are any, and is looking to for you to protect the environmental sensitivities that may exist on your property. What's different in this watershed overlay is actually requiring any subdivision of four lots or more to be a conservation subdivision. And they're stating that you need at least thirty percent of your land to be preserved as open space or permanently preserved as part of the conservation subdivision. When the planning board is asking you to preserve a concert or to undertake a conservation subdivision, they are asking you to preserve the environmental sensitivities or the natural, um, the scenic resources or something that may be historically significant on your property. They're not put codifying a percentage. This overlay is codifying a minimum percentage. In the regulation, there is a list of prohibitive uses with things like landfills, dry wells, junkyards, fuel storage facilities, bulk mining, bulk storage. None of the uses that are listed in the prohibited uses are allowed within our residential zoning districts unless you have a special exception from one of our boards. So this is just codifying more stringently that you cannot have these uses. You can't have them today. Soil disturbances from construction activities of greater than five thousand square feet must comply with New York State DEC Storm Water Erosion and Sediment Control Standards. This requirement currently exists in our town code in relation to the east of Hudson watershed, the New York City watershed area. The New York City watershed area in Newcastle serves as a drinking water reservoir, drinking water watershed and it has a total maximum daily load calculation that is reconne- recognized by New York State DEC. The Indian Brook is part of Austining's drinking water supply and Austining is moving towards development of a TMDL. They do not have one yet, but they are working on a surf as a surface drinking water plan endorsed by New York State DEC. The watershed municipalities have asked that everybody adopt the five, minimum five thousand square foot requirement for erosion and sediment control. If you were to come in today into the planning board to subdivide your property, you would be disturbing more than five thousand square feet of area and you would be required to employ erosion and sediment controls. Impervious surfaces under the watershed protection overlay that are greater than one thousand square feet must be treated for water quality volume peak flows and volume per the DEC Storm Water man- manual as well as chapter one oh eight A, which says the very same thing. This is not a new regulation for the town of Newcastle when it comes to a thousand square feet within a residential zone. Septic systems must be pumped at least once every three-year period. So this is actually a new requirement for the town. In the New York City watershed, um, the the state MS four permit has always required a pumping once every five years. They have become more specific about that. And under the new permit, we have to demonstrate the pumping every five years. This requirement requires it every three years. Lawn chemicals should not be applied within twenty-five linear feet of any water course or wellhead buffer area. Newcastle does not have any wellhead buffer, wellhead, wellheads within this watershed. Again, it's single-family zoning, you have private wells, that is not a wellhead. A wellhead is a public, i- is a groundwater well or something related to a public water system. There's none of, none of the wellheads for Austining's drinking water supply are located in the town of Newcastle. We already do not allow the application of lawn chemicals within a hundred and fifty feet of a wetland or a water body. So that is something that is in our code today. This is a code that is really looking at our, at the villages and the town that do not have the land area that we have. The watershed overlay district requires wetland mitigation equal to twice the area of wetland buffer disturbance or wetland or or wetland disturbance. Our co- our wetlands code right now requires a one-to-one mitigation. If you are caught doing something and you, there's a violation issued or it's a super sensitive wetland, a town board, the planning board or the zoning board or the environmental review board or the environmental coordinator may require you to do two-to-one mitigation. If you're doing, if you're disturbing this area in the Indian Brook Overlay District, you will need to do two-to-one, that's what this means. And that means if you disturb a hundred square feet of a wetland, you need to mitigate two hundred square feet uh in plantings or restoration on that property.
Restrained
Restricting.
Sabrina, just want to make sure maybe I didn't hear clearly, so this is new?
Sorry. Two-to-one is new.
We have two-to-one is new, okay.
But it's
It's new, but we do have
You still do it now, you can can do it now, it's like
You we can do it now, our code requires one-to-one but a lot of times if there's if there's a project that comes into a board under a violation, they do offer up two-to-one. So it's not unheard of in the town, it's just not codified as two-to-one, it's codified as one-to-one. Restrictive buffer uses, so there's specific uses in this overlay protection zone. Lawn is not allowed today, the other uses are not allowed today. That hundred and fifty foot buffer has been a regulated buffer in our town code since the eighties I think like in the nineteen eighties. So we have a hundred and fifty foot our our we have two different levels of buffer. Our typical buffer is a hundred feet throughout the town. But if you are within our environmental overlay district which essentially covers the eastern and the western sides of town, your buffer is increased to a hundred and fifty feet. And we ju- we just restrict the entire area, we don't single out the uses. This overlay is singling out the uses. There's no disturbance allowed within two hundred feet of any wellhead or stormwater hotspot hotspot. Again, we don't have any wellheads. And a stormwater hotspot is is def- is really defined as a land use activity that generates a higher concentration of pollutants. So things like hydrocarbons, trace metals, we're talking about gasoline stations, automotive mechanic repair places, um maybe depending on you know s- uh a a a truck storage facility. We don't allow them in our single family zones. There's no wellhead pro- no wellhead protection or no wellheads, I'm sorry, or stormwater hotspots. That's not to say we won't discover something that would qualify under the M S four permit as a stormwater hotspot as a violation or an illicit discharge. Those areas are regulated much more heavily than what this overlay district is calling for by D E C. Um again buffers adjacent to hotspots shall not exceed e- extend two hundred feet horizontally away from the hotspot source. We don't have any known hotspots in this area. And then there's some um um violation penalties that are listed in this code that talk about not more than two hundred and fifty dollars for each day or part thereof during which the violation occurs. Our town code has varying penalties depending on the type of violation that can range from five hundred a day to a thousand dollars a day. So w- we are often more restrictive when it comes to a violation that is being proposed in the overlay district. And again, this is new activities. If there's something going on in a buffer today, let's say your shed is in that buffer today, this is not going to require you to remove that shed, you're not gonna be under violation for that shed. It's only with new construction.
One question, if Newcastle Newcastle does not allow any users within a hundred and fifty foot uh buffer and there's twelve listed. We're more stringent now, so theoretically these these twelve uses for Newcastle residents are irrelevant because we're well beyond that.
Correct. Yes. You shouldn't do anything, e- if you wanted to mitigate and take down trees in your buffer area, you need to get a permit.
Regardless.
Regardless. If you wanna take out invasive species unless it's specifically written into your site plan by the planning board, you need to come back and request that the uh permission to take out your invasive species. Now does that happen a lot? Probably not.
So it seems that one of the more stringent things is currently we charge more for fines and penalties.
Yeah.
Um and we're more lax if I'm reading this right in terms of taking care of our septics.
Yes.
So it's gonna be a more strict requirement now.
Correct. And the thirty percent mandate of the conservation of the town.
And and I and I think isn't it a- and you may or may not know the answer is that I just had mine pumped, isn't it generally two to three years you should be pumping your septic anyway?
Correct.
And we don't have wells for the most part. They do.
Yeah, we do.
Everybody every mo- everyone in this in in Newcastle's watershed area has private drinking water wells.
Yes.
And that's it, that's a summary.
Okay.
So so at all of the all five municipalities are in the process at very various stages of their process to adopt this legislation. The town of Cortland has adopted the legislation a- as it is written. Um changes to this legislation would have to be i- if you want them considered, we would have to go back to all of the other municipalities and suggest it um and see if it's okay to change it for our community.
And Sabrina, has feedback been shared f- to you from your colleagues who share your position in those other municipalities in terms of those boards responding?
Um Cortland passed it.
Right, right, Cortland's obvious.
Cort- Cortland passed it, the other two municipalities are reviewing it. It impacts a municipality that is more densely developed and doesn't have as much open space, more so than it does a community like Newcastle. Um they are moving forward, I haven't heard anything any changes that they wanted to make but the use lists like the specificity in the lists are for places like the town of Austin, the village of Austin and the village of Croton on Hudson because they're not as mono-zoned as we are.
So it seems as if almost they're catching up to us.
Correct. Yes, a- and again, you know, when we sat down at the table, everyone's like, well, what does your code say, what does your code say? Because we are lucky enough to ha- to be very advanced when it comes to our environmental protection measures.
Sabrina, how many parcels are in our section?
I do not have that list.
Sorry.
I wanna say it was a it was a hundred and two.
I think it's like a hundred and two. Hundred and two, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we and and we have a list of all of the parcels they associate with the map.
Lauren's gonna have it. Lauren, how many parcels were on the list of for the letters that we sent out? A hundred and
It was about a hundred and three.
Thank you. Okay. Well, thank you for that Sabrina, I I um do any of the board members have any further questions?
Sure.
Before we open it up the public hearing? No, okay, all right, so I will start, I have my list of of names. If anyone hasn't filled out a card and think that they would like to make a comment, please go fill out a a card with your name and address. Cards are over there. Um David Valdez, you did not state your address, so if you will
Oh, I'm sorry, it's s- uh sixty four
It's okay. Now come to the microphone please. Otherwise people won't hear you.
Thank you, sixty four Glendale Road. So um just addressing the summary, thanks very much Sabrina for that. Uh I think we need to be very cautious about the language we use. It's talked that Cortland has passed this, but for all we know it only applies to two parcels. Just like this legislation for the town of Newcastle only applies to a hundred and two or a hundred and three parcels, there are more than five thousand eight hundred parcels in Newcastle. So when you say Cortland passed it, to whom does it apply? Where are they in the district? Who is excluded? What is the conditions around their property? Um and I I wanna get to it, but you know on the map, it seems very arbitrary. So give you just very simple example. Alapartis Road and the residents on Alapartis Road but not the Abercrombie Estate which has a Route one thirty four address is included. Alapartis Circle which is surrounded by ponds and water and flows directly into the Austin Water Supply is excluded. That doesn't make any sense. Soon as you go up S- Spring Valley Road, the houses stop being included as you approach T-Town but everything south of it is included, including the houses that are south of Glendale Road on Spring Valley Road where that water cannot possibly even get to the Indian Brook. So it it's not it doesn't i- it just it's doesn't hold together. Let me read my remarks and and we'll go from there. So um I'm David Valdez, I live in the town of Newcastle in the West End. I have an Austin designated home address. Our parcel is five acres and our home hugs one corner of it towards the street probably on half an acre or so. Um it so it has at least three fifths of the property is outside the deer fence, is unused though we very carefully manage all of it and it and and have excluded all of the invasives and have worked for years to make it look perfect in terms of nature. Um it has exactly the kind of characteristics and property rights that the town of Newcastle is contemplating on actually taking away from us with this legislation. Um and I wanna I'll get to the numbers in a second. So I for one can tell you that I certainly appreciate efforts to manage and control water and water quality. We look out, I have hiked down the entire Indian Brook to to Austin to the the chain the the barbed wire fence that is their reservoir. I know what it's like and I know what what the whole water looks like. It's actually incredibly clear, frogs, turtles, the birds. It looks like Newcastle in eighteen eighty, there's leaves that have covered the ground. There's all the trees except for the ones that have been caused by the diseases, the new sort of generation of trees. There's hardly a weed because nobody disturbs the leaves and nobody goes back there. So it's actually in really, really, really good shape. So we're trying to protect the water um in a part of town that actually has incredibly good water. The members and the residents of the West End should be congratulated on their work. They don't pollute it, doesn't have soap in it, they don't dump chemicals in it, they don't do anything. When a truck came down Glendale Road, fell over and and dumped their oil into right into the Indian Brook, the t- where was town of Newcastle? Did they mitigate it? No. Did they call away the soil? No. Did they pull the oil out? No. So it's just kind of i- it's not consistent in in the rules to the homeowners. But let me let me s- go back to my notes, sorry. So I I appreciate the water control and I'm here to express my objection to the proposed overlay district which attempts really to rationalize a far-reaching set of onerous regulations that will permit the town of Newcastle to deny or tax with fees at the building permit request, control of building materials that the property owners can use and essentially take away their property rights without compensation. This rule, you know, it's kept me up at night for about a month when I first found about it because it actually kind of extinguishes hope. Right, you think, oh, well, I'm gonna pull together two million dollars, I'm gonna build myself a glass house on the top of my five acres. I'm gonna build something discreet and beautiful and world class. And now I read, oh, no, uh-uh, sorry, steep slopes, gotta protect the water, cutback, you have all these acres, but they don't count towards your property, but you're not reducing my taxes for it. Um the law is discriminatory and unfair because it seeks to solve a nonexistent real issue, right? Worries about water quali- quality by penal- penalizing the owners of just a hundred and two parcels when we know how many there are. It's not applying to the whole town. Austin has no complaint about its water supplier quality. The water in the reservoir from the Indian Brook is considered excellent and it has been since forever. I think it's important to apply some math to the issue and provide a dollar value of what the proposed taking by regulation without compensation on a very conservative basis is and to suggest an alternative approach and mention how ironic it is that the leadership team in Newcastle is said to be partnering with municipalities and what is the current situation of their water management. Austin has raw sewage currently today right now flowing into the Crowton River on the Hudson. Okay, Co- Cortland who's held up this, oh, Cortland passed it. Cortland just gave a special permit for on the very corner of Glendale Road and and um Quaker Ridge Road, a ninety-room hospital that is gonna be run off of septic and wells. That's Cortland looking out for the water in our district. Um Newcastle itself, you run your business from this building, you're surrounded by hard surfaces, you have blacktops, you have the very building that would not be permitted in the West End.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Right, you're in the middle of getting ready to develop twenty-three acres of land downtown. Is it gonna have like clay s- clay roads and and grass on the roof? Right, so that's what you're gonna require of us in the West End. The proposed overlay district district law will prevent the disturbance of soil within two hundred feet. You know, there's all these rules. If I take the heel of my foot and I in a rainstorm and I divert the water course to get it from not flowing on the Glendale but instead into a ditch on my property, that's illegal. If I have knotweed growing up into my living room, I cannot use any herbicides 'cause of where my property is used. I have to call a vendor to, you know, dig it out or whatever. It's just kind of crazy, we have to collect rainwater, right? And there's all sorts of things like that. So what are the costs? The current market value of a two acre as-of-right home parcel and as you rightly pointed out, there's all these deductions, not two acres. It could be five acres to equal two acres under your rule 'cause of the deductions. Based on very recent sales, they're worth two hundred thousand dollars apiece, right? So let's just say and I looked at all the parcels, I looked at all the square footages, I looked at the sizes. There's informally maybe twenty-three that have some development rights, that's it. So you would be taking away like basically four point five million dollars in the stroke of a pen from the current owners off their balance sheets 'cause they could not monetize that or use it for their own use after the rules are applied. What are the cost to the town? Twenty-three parcels, taxes, thirty thousand a year on a new house over the course of the ten years or twenty years it's gonna take to build those out. First thirty years, twenty-three million dollars forever. You will never collect that tax revenue, you will freeze the West End into being what it currently is. You will discourage improvement of property because it's gonna be incredibly cumbersome. You're going to turn the West End into a museum of what you think the community should look like. The alternative really is just doing the work to actually identify the real measurable development potential on a lot-by-lot basis. Get into a conversation with the owner, maybe it's twenty families. Some of the lots are twenty acres, some of the lots are a hu- more than a hundred acres and work out and deal with them. Maybe it's a converma- conservation even as you encourage, but actually the word isn't ask, it's tell. And maybe you should grant an as-of-right building site to someone in exchange for extinguishing the worry about the water and the development in a new house and oh my god, the West End is changing. And earn the revenue from the tax revenue and allow that thing to exist and the and the homeowner will be happy with it. So you know again it this is over probably twenty potential home sites. Meanwhile, a huge overlay just to maintain your house. So that if I call friends also and I say, hi, um replace my roof or I you know, then all of a sudden I'm like, oh my god, you know, I have to submit a survey to the town because I want a parking space next to my house. Seven thousand dollars for that, for a formal survey, you know what the fees are.
May I may I May I ask a question?
Yes.
Because I just wanna make sure because I I think facts are important and and some is is not clear to me. So for we may agree or disagree, but for example, you referenced that at the gate about oil trucks spilling over and we did nothing. The D E C cleans that up, right, right Joe?
Yes.
So it's not, I mean, let's be you make it seem as if that happened.
Okay, so I'll I'll take that back, so I withdraw that, that's not the town of Newcastle.
So but So and then we we talked about we talked fifteen north really is coming potentially to be built and one of the things we're discussing with them is to have a sort of a living roof. to help mitigate. So so
Awesome.
so to again, to to chat with facts are important. You're making statements, you wanna make sure on the same page.
Right. Okay.
Um when you say take away your rights and it's far more onerous legislation, and this is more of a question towards you. Uh I'm looking at this comparison and I realize it's just a very brief comparison. It seems as if a lot of this is uh is either equal to or in existing now and the things that are more stringent potentially um are the the applicability. And other than that, it seems, pardon me, and the general provisions for wetlands, watercourses and where it's one one-to-one as opposed to two-to-one.
And the septic.
So it's
Yeah, septic, that's
Right, so
septic, so but it's uh I mean, it's not, it's really just a question that I understand. It seems to me it's already in existence for a significant portion, but that's why I'm, that's why I'm a little confused.
Right, so in our case, we have a five-bedroom septic. If we have a certificate of occupancy for the use of the septic. And we two people live there. And I talked to many of my neighbors, they're like, I'm in Tahoe seven months out of the year. I have a five-bedroom septic. I'm never even home. I flushed the toilet, I'm a single person. Four times in two months. Why do I have to now pay this, this prove to the town that I'm pumping my septic? Has a single septic run over and polluted anything?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
So I'm having
In this district?
Yes, absolutely. So I'm having also a hard time understanding um to piggyback on what Jeremy is saying.
On the town, yes.
So if we are in fact talking about um two-to-one as opposed to one-to-one mitigation, we're talking about pumping um septic systems. I'm having a hard time uh squaring that with concerns of taking of private property and all of the, you know,
Because because you're
The consequences because the the law already exists and it is.
Right, so why do you need a new law if it's already in place? So I'm not contesting current law.
Right, but then a new, the new law, it it's for the larger area and the existing law is at least as stringent if not more than the new law.
'Cause I think it's more for the larger area.
Then Victoria, I would ask you, why doesn't it apply townwide? Why doesn't it apply to Chappaqua? Why doesn't it apply to Millwood?
So I'm having, I'm having a difficult
Exactly.
Because all the areas are, the areas are different. It's not going to find a, to the ha- to the hamlet.
No, they are coursing with water. They just haven't been defined as in this watershed. So I I wanna, I wanna let others talk and just and stop, if I may.
So I guess you know, my Oh, please, I'm Glass Sabrina, Glass Sabrina. Please go ahead, make your comment, yeah.
I don't, I don't wanna be the defender of the opposition. Imagine, this is what it sounds like to us in the West End, what's being proposed. Imagine I take this very same legislation. And I change the word water for bird since we're very concerned about birds and bird strikes and bird population. And I say water courses and I say windows, right? And then people, five people on the West End say to Chappaqua, no more windows, cover 'em up. You gotta have anti-bird strike windows, gotta protect the birds that are part of the flow through here. Here's the new rule. Right, it's just, it's extremely onerous and it's prejudicial against a two percent, less than two percent of your residents for maybe twenty parcels. So you have a gigantic, gigantic, penalizing, worrisome set of rules that is gonna allow the department to deny or charge or get me another ex- expert. Fees, 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 in order to get a twenty by, you know, a parking space out of the town on your own land.
Mm-hmm.
And we don't rent our land from the town, right?
I'm sorry, David, these laws already exist.
Okay, Victoria, I'm asking you
Yes, yeah.
You you mean you would use, if you wanted, if you wanted to formalize a parking space on your property and you were coming to the town for a permit. They would requir- the building department would require you to obtain a survey, so
Yes, but if I wanna sell three acres of land and let somebody build or I wanna build up there, you're gonna tell me no
With a
because now under the new slopes, deep slopes and the water in the ditch, that I'm not going to be able to do this.
Those steep slopes already exist. We will never tell you, we will never, today, we have those regulations on our books.
Mm-hmm.
They are not prohibited regulations. They do not discount your buildable area on your property. But you are required to take restorative measures to ensure that disruption of the steep slopes occurs within a manner that does not impact water quality or affect your neighbor.
Haven't applied to Chappaqua, haven't applied to Millwood, happy to agree.
It does, it does. It does apply.
Okay, thank you.
Good job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, uh Corey Sichao, please come up. Corey, you're up.
Go ahead. Hi, Corey, see you guys, six four Glendale. Um getting up here, hi.
We take it to the
Hey, um it was great to watch the envisioned Newcastle planning happen. I really appreciate like the process you've gone through. I've seen you guys really put like the work in and do the time. We, I think you're seeing a lot of angry people tonight because they didn't feel like that process happened on the side of town and I and I think you'll see a lot of unhappiness up here. Um I just wanna speak briefly, I'm opposed to this. I I think it underscores existing environmental overlay stuff which is far too strong. I I I've seen some of the action in in people's applications. It's extremely rigorous what we're putting people through. None of this neighborhood would exist with this regulation. None of these houses that you will live in would be there. It 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 seems a little, it seems a little beyond. Uh I totally appreciate the comparison you gave us. That was extremely helpful. It it still worries me. And I don't think it addresses the 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 surface water issue that the town is worried about like David brought it before. The accidents on the street. We can, we, there's a lot of things we can do as a town. We can close Glendale to traffic. We can do a ton of the, everyone behind me just said, no, no, but like there's things we can do. We wanna radically help water supply and environmentalism in this town and we should talk about those.
Yeah.
Um and I and I don't love this. Um that's it. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright. So sorry if I get this name wrong, but it says Ceruley D C.
That's, that's Americanized, yes.
Very well, okay, please come up.
Age has its privileges and I was going to ask to stay there.
Well, you can, if you'd like to sit down, we'll just take in
Good.
All right, the first thing I
We will sit.
No, that's okay.
We want everyone to be comfortable. Alright, then wait one second and I'll I'll adjust it down for you.
My first is a complaint. The letter that I received, I hadn't held because I was in Massachusetts, is dated May thirty-first. It was mailed on June sixth at one P M. And we were, we, the meeting is today at June eleventh. That doesn't give give many people in our area enough time to even try to digest this material. In a, now a positive, I don't know of anyone who doesn't have their septic system because pumped, because if you don't, you pay for it. Really, it will back up. Uh we, when we have septic, uh the septic fields have to be very carefully taken care of. And only one who lives in these hundred and two properties has to do that. It isn't even a matter of your regulations. Uh and then the uh the other one too is all, my other one is also a complaint. Sunshine was not required. I now, I now have my well water tested every month.
Exactly. Exactly. Why not?
In addition to that, I had to get a U V system to filter the water from the well, from the well through another three systems that I have. I had four systems that filter the water that I use in my house. And all of must, much of this happened with Sunshine. So where was Newcastle then?
Exactly. And they cast so soft right away.
Yes.
Woo! Right away for their money, their money. And they built so many
Uh can you please not speak from the audience? You're very free to come up to the microphone. We welcome your comments. So um you know, you know, retain your thoughts and
I'm just, I'm just, I'm
well, please come up to the microphone and don't interrupt the people who are commenting. Thank you.
I'm just, I'm
Alright, the other is, uh the U V system cost close to three hundred thousand dollars and ne- never occurred to me or my neighbor uh the Hines to sue Sunshine because then to pay for it. But it was close to three thousand and they have it installed. And then every year it costs close to five hundred dollars to change the U V light because if you don't, the beeping will drive you crazy. Uh the the, as far as I can remember, everything I've ever done to a deck or to a uh the garage, et cetera, has required a permit anyway. And I don't know of anyone on my street who doesn't love trees, love water, uh love Glendale Road. I'm never mis- mistreating anything because we, uh I think all of us are envi- environmentalists from the ground up. And I think that's all I have to say, except that I'm concerned about receiving such notice, so I thank you.
I appreciate that. Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay.
Oh, I want to, I I love him, love him.
Your neighbor.
Look at that. That must feel very nice, okay. Good, um we have Ann Martin, Martin.
Hi, um you actually answered my question about the wellhead because they didn't specify if it was private or not, so it looked a little onerous. Um so that was actually my main question, but back to Sunshine, this was all floating around from two thousand seven, two thousand eight. Did Sunshine have to comply with this if we're worried about the water? You know, protection of water, protection of land, disturbance of land? Did Sunshine, I mean, this is two thousand seven, two thousand eight. Sunshine was approved in two thousand fifteen. Hundred fifty thousand square feet in my backyard, you should see it's LaGuardia Airport that I can see in the wintertime. It's lights as far as the eye can see. So did they have to comply with any of this?
Sun- Sunshine had standards that were um related to the project that they were building. And they had to comply with Newcastle's codes. They were, a- as I said before, they're the only special exception use permit in this watershed. But he did have to comply with the buffers and all of the other elements that this code is trying to match.
So so I have a question. They didn't have to have an environmental impact statement, but you're saying in here that any disturbance of over five thousand square feet
He had to do all of the erosion and sediment controls, all of the storm water required, the water quality, volume, all of the requirements.
That are Newcastle rules.
No, those are New York State D E C rules that the town had to adopt back in twenty-ten, twenty-nine, twen- twenty actually late nineteen nineties that are continually being updated. So
But you're
As as a special use permit, he was required to put together a stormwater management plan that went through all of that
So they got to, in a way, they got to write their own rules. They didn't have an environmental impact statement.
They did not write their own rules.
Okay, well, okay, so I have a question. If you have to disturb more than five thousand square feet, which and you're like, don't worry, it's not gonna pertain to existing properties. But if we, if we sell our property or if we wanna expand our property, five thousand square feet, so disturbance, you're saying not new construction.
Mm-hmm.
But I'm sure any addition would be considered part of it. So if we wanted to expand our house,
Correct. Yes.
we then have to go through another level of, it says D E C, you know, level, you know, a whole nother layer of of protections.
Erosion and sediment control, which currently exists within our town.
It's, well, it's, they they're actually not very specific about it. They say what is it? Department, New York State Department of Environmental Conservation Storm Water Manual dated two thousand fourteen. So that's another level that the rest of Newcastle doesn't have to go through.
Oh, they actually do have to go through it.
Well then, why is it, why do we need this here?
So so I mean, I mean, if I'm understanding this correctly, the reason why we quote what we need is because it's expanding the area to to have other communities conform
Correct.
for that, for that region. So it's not as if, probably it's more impactful to some other municipalities than it is to us because we already have those standards.
Correct.
And anyone who's being more adversely from your perspective is being impacted, true or not, that's coming from a a different municipality. Because most we have, it's them catching up to us for the most part.
Correct. Right, I like, for example, in the New York City watershed, those requirements exist today. They've existed for a while to protect New York City's drinking water. Now, those erosion and sediment controls are regulated by this, by the New York State, what's called a blue book. It's their manual. We have adopted those standards in our town code and make reference to that for the New York City watershed area. This watershed group is out to protect the Indian Brook and Croton Gorge watersheds, which Indian Brook serves as a drinking water supply. So they're wanting to employ the same standards that New York City watershed is employing. That area of our town, in this area of our town, plus the areas in these other municipalities.
Okay, so just answer me this. I understand you're saying this this watershed area, you wanna match up all the towns that match there. Are you telling me that literally everything that's going to affect our one hundred and two properties as part of this already exists?
Not everything, not to the extent that that, not to the extent as I identified tonight.
You know?
There were a couple of areas, the septic system pumpouts.
Right, right. But you're you're, so you're saying any new expansion is in the, in our subsection here, any new expansion, construction.
Right. That five thousand square foot erosion and sediment control is currently not a regulation. However, if you were to make an expansion that involved one thousand square, greater than one thousand square feet of floor area, you would requir- be required to do erosion and sediment control and water quality volumes.
Okay, we we just back with, so but you're saying, so there are different rules then?
What do you mean, there are different rules?
So you're saying, you just said that there's no regulation and then you you kept talking about I needed to like sort of back up to any expansion.
There's no requirement on five thousand square feet right now in in this area for erosion and sediment control solely. So if you're not
And so that whole, that whole other sentence about, you know, complying with the depart- Department of Environmental Protection or the D C, that layer of 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 review that thresholds holds true for the rest of Newcastle?
It holds true for the east of Hudson watershed area of Newcastle.
Okay, is that the rest of Newcastle?
It is not the rest of Newcastle.
Okay, so it is different. It is different.
What what I, what I, what I said, there's an, oh, in Newcastle, there's one other watershed that has this requirement and that is the east of Hudson watershed. That's not the whole town. It's a large part of the town.
Oh, yes. And I'm, where is that? I don't, I don't understand that.
It's it's, it's actually the east of Hudson watershed covers part of Millwood. It is, does not cover part of Chappaqua, but then it covers the entire um eastern portion of town.
Yep. And and when was that put into effect? When were those properties?
Nineteen ninety-six maybe or was the revised regulations?
So then our regulations are gonna match their regulations.
The requirement for the erosion and sediment controls will match their regulations.
Okay, I'm sorry. I sometimes feel like you're like, I I'm 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 losing things in the semantics here and like I feel like there's words being thrown, like, like, uh I'm
There's two different Well, well, there's two different There's two different, there's two different requirements. There's requirements for erosion and sediment controls which involve disturbance of ground.
Okay, so, okay, so the thing is, is you keep using those terms, erosion and sediment control and and disturbance. But there's a a ch- a really general s- sentence here that says that, you know, disturbance of a of five thousand square feet should comply with the New York State Department of Enviro- Environmental Conservation Storm Water Manual two thousand fourteen. So we don't really know what what all that is. So we don't really know how prohibitive that is. And I'm just saying, it seems to us, and we feel a little you know, Sunshine was a bitter pill to s- to swallow because a hundred and fifty thousand square feet is in our backyard and we're worried about water and we're worried about protection and we, whatever, I I there's no
Can can I, can I, can I point you to talk to the town board?
Okay, alright, right, I'm sorry. But but so I feel like our the value of our property is probably negatively impacted because if we go to sell a property and 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 they do a review and they say, oh, whoa, 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 whoa. That house is in this special area, so you're gonna have to go through a whole nother layer of protections. Then and 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 maybe they'll pass me, you're you you say divar- D C and people like, whoa, no. You know, like that's, that's gonna be a problem. So I really, and I, we just feel targeted. And we already take care of our our water, our property. There's no problems here. We just feel very targeted. It's not happening anyplace else, no offense, but I don't think any of you guys are part of the one hundred and two properties. So it's really easy to take, you know, to to put, you know, overlays of of mitigating things on somebody else's property. Um and I just, we do feel targeted. I I I don't, I I feel like it does diminish the value of our property because there's mitigations on any further expansion or building on our property. Um I understand you're saying that it's, it's, you know, there's no real change, it's already there, but I don't think that's actually, I think I think we're slicing and dicing that a little bit. So, you know, I I, that's it, that's all I have to say. Thanks for your time.
Thank, thank you. Um what I would add
Cheers.
Because we, we don't really need the clapping. I mean, we we won't, you know, we take comments very seriously with or without it. Um I think that what, one thing we need to do is um delineate with a lot more clarity what exactly is the same. And my understanding is that much of um the requirements here are are the same as the existing requirements. So that for me is uh the thing that I'm really trying to understand. Um but I think that we could perhaps create another chart for the next public hearing to to clarify what exactly is different. And maybe do it more clearly than than we've done. You know, I thought it was pretty clear, but I think people are having a hard time.
I I can, I can
No, but if we can, yeah.
Yeah, Madam Supervisor, I I understand what you're saying, but it it is very difficult other than taking, I I've identified the areas.
Yeah.
Um you know, per- under G performance criteria, number one Um you know, per- under G performance criteria number one, s- if I read it out loud the entire thing, it is clear what it's talking about. All construction activities, as defined by the town of Newcastle, that involves soil disturbances greater than five thousand square feet shall comply with New York State D E C Storm Water Manual. All construction activities shall be required to meet the standards of the Speedy's General Permit for Construction Activities that involve soil disturbances greater than five thousand square feet. And if they involve new impervious surfaces greater than one thousand square feet must also follow or create a stormwater pollution prevention plan.
Is that for all of Newcastle or is that just for people who are within the E O H watershed?
That that one requirement tied to the five thousand square feet of soil disturbance with or wa- with or without development of an impervious surface, so if you wanted to clear cut and and put in um a playground and it's more than five thousand square feet, you need to make sure that your clear cutting and your playground do not run soil and sediment outside of the area that you're disturbing.
So that applies to all of Newcastle, not just east of Hudson watershed.
It means put up a sil- i- if that. It only applies at five thousand square feet to a drinking watershed at this point with this legislation. Now, if you you tie that five thousand square feet with a a cu- an impervious surface, an area where the water can't go through, then you are required to do a stormwater pollution prevention plan which is the second number two. A lot of times, we do not see just five thousand square feet of disturbance i- i- as part of a building permit. There's always some sort of development and usually it's a thousand square feet or more. Okay? So so the 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 in this watershed, because of the smaller municipalities with less land area, they are breaking it down more defined than we would otherwise do it if it was not mandated by a drinking watershed.
Can you repeat?
So if if you have land area that's not in a drinking watershed, you will not see this requirement.
Right, so if you're living in town, that's right.
If you live in the Long Island Sound watershed portions of town or the Bronx River watershed within town, it does not apply.
It applies, it's. Does not apply.
Because those watersheds don't supply drinking water to people.
So I I have to say, like, on further clarification, I understand the feeling of the residents that are here tonight because it does certainly feel like it applies to a very specific group of people who I think historically often feel a little bit left out of the conversation because they live on the West End, so I do, I I'm hearing that and I just wanna make sure that I'm understanding where you're all coming from, so I appreciate the comments and and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have a map of the east of Hudson?
To to look it up right now, I'm trying to find.
Yeah.
Yeah, we do. Hang on, let me do it while I sit here and I'll share my screen.
I think we should also point out that this chart, although it's it's very helpful, it it's a resource, okay, and it shouldn't be relied on
Okay.
in its entirety, it's 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 not intended to be a complete analysis of of all the changes and it shouldn't be relied on in its entirety if anybody's you know, uh wants to have a complete understanding of of what the what the uh that applies, we have to refer to the original source, but we do appreciate the uh the the resource, but but I'm just, it's just a reminder for the record.
It's the legislation, I guess, yeah, the legislation.
It's the draft legislation.
It's a legislation.
The the legislation.
Yeah.
Okay, um. Cynthia, um um, I mean Sabrina, while you're looking for that, I'll call someone else out. Cynthia, oh, I'm sorry, can't really read the handwriting very well. At one hundred Glendale Road, sorry, I can't get your last name.
Okay, hi, it's Cynthia Manchurian at one hundred Glendale Road, and I've owned my property for about twenty five years. Um I will say that there are passionate people in the room, and I'm definitely one of them. I might be a little repetitive based on the other points, but since I'm not a good public speaker, I'm gonna read my notes. Okay, so Sabrina identifies a hundred and two parcels in the Newcastle Indian Brook Basin. I find it incredible that you have run a public meeting on such an important topic, like many others, where I received the notice on Saturday. People are very busy and scheduled, they might not be around like going with these ladies on the weekend, and the ability to show up to read the material and to know it's really about where you live, it's really hard with such short notice. So I'm hoping that you keep the public um comment uh period not only open, but provide future public uh meetings for this topic. Um so under K, the effective date of legislation, you plan on filing this legissta- legislation with the New York Secretary of State by June thirtieth, um that's what I heard in your work session. How are you gonna do that with this number of people, and these are only the people from Saturday who showed up? Um I don't think you can, and then I'm wondering, is this just a moot point and essentially you're just looking for buy-in from all five municipalities for the exact same thing? So we might say whatever we want about how we feel about how Newcastle should respond to legislation, but in the end, does it matter? Or is it just uniform for the five municipalities? Um so I feel like you're playing beat the beat the clock to submit this important legislation when in fact the original document, as mentioned, was created in two thousand eight, so why the rush now? I don't understand, um. And I'm just wondering if Newcastle will benefit from any funds um if the deadline is met? Is that the reason to push at this time? Um so Newcastle commercial entities in the Indian Brook Basin, um there should be no further special permits for commercial entities in our R two A zone ever. Sabrina mentioned during the work session that um Newcastle has only issued permission for one such entity, Sunshine Home. So I'm not gonna go into that, but I was a leader against that project in um in the day. But you can hear from these other people before I open my mouth, how we all feel about the approval of that project, it's a travesty. Um and by the way, if you think about it, um a project like that, so many issues that we weren't happy with, but based on this legislation, just the additional traffic, which is dangerous, um goes against protecting water quality because they're using all the roads that literally abut the buffer, the wetlands, Indian Brook. They're using the same Glendale Spring Valley, Alapartis Roads and adding pollution which you're trying to prevent. Um so there are two other examples of that, one was meant, both were mentioned. Uh the Abercrombie Castle, so that should never get a special uh permit. And the planning board about a year ago was very interested in a novel concept to create a retreat for some commercial entity that was interested in environmental activities and built a lot of uh cabins and the main house as the retreat center. That should never happen, and then as mentioned, Cortland is in the final stages of the approving the Hudson Wellness Drug Rehab Project. They own twenty two acres on the Newcastle side, so that makes you guys a very interested party. The primary roads that they're gonna use for commercial traffic are Newcastle roads, Glendale Spring Valley, Alapartis Home, the roads that we live on. And um again, just from a pollution standpoint, into these water bodies, it should be a a no. Um I wanted to move on to E fifteen, the calcium chloride application. De-icing calcium chloride use is restricted to the minimum amount needed for public safety as determined by the town highway superintendent. Statement is too general, too vague, and this use cannot be enforced during a bad weather anyway. Um in, on my property, I try to use sand until I literally can't get on or off the property. Um but I believe if you expect the residents of the West End to restrict their salt use to a minimum, whatever that is, you should also restrict the town's ability to use the calcium chloride when de-icing our rural roads. That's it in the middle of the Indian Brook watershed. You're the biggest offenders, you have to go through Glendale and Alapartis and Spring Valley and throw salt all over the place. And the buffers are literally right there, the wetlands, the Indian Brook are right there, so you're the biggest offenders. And when you look up um alternatives, you should both educate the public about these alternatives and lead by example. From what I understand, magnesium chloride and sodium acetate ice melt um are much better materials to use in these sensitive areas, and it would be great if Newcastle led by example on in that discrete, on that discrete topic. Another one, F, general provisions for wetlands, watercourses, water bodies, wetland buffer areas and steep slopes. So development of any of these water bodies except where no reasonable alternative exists or where the applicant would otherwise suffer undue hardship if a permit is not issued, quote, and in the event such development is approved, impact shall be minimized to the greatest extent practable practicable and a mitigation plan shall be prepared, that's in the legislation. This statement is vague and sounds like the review process will not be consistent. I even feel I need to think about this statement more and I live in the watershed. I think Newcastle Town Board should also think through this statement more carefully to understand its full meaning and possible scenarios. What I do know is that there should be no special permits for commercial entities in the West End. Um it's R two A zoning residential, consideration of suffering undue hardship for residential property needs to be much more explicit and not left to a case by case bas- basis with the interpretation of this legislation. If the regulation is so restrictive, please lay out the exceptions and let the residents respond during a future public meeting. We don't know what exceptions you would accept. Um again, the local residents will not forgive Newcastle for permitting Sunshine Home, they did everything wrong. Um and they wound up blasting and changing the contour of their steep slopes, building an in drainage infrastructure um to counter the damage that they did to their property. So and later on in this meeting, they're considering accepting a bond for fifty thousand dollars for pay, to pay for mitigation if the town has to get involved. That amount would never cover the repair of the facility's runoff infrastructure if there were a problem um that led to runoff from their steep slopes onto Spring Valley roads, so I would say no to that because it's not enough money. Town responsibilities, I'll add that the town um should have its part to play as well for disturbing or removing vegetation and trees. F five, in the summer, the town comes through our roads, which are directly adjacent to these wetlands and waterways, and mows the vegeta- vegeta- vegetation down, including tall grasses and other plants to about three inches. By doing so, you are absolutely damaging the biodiversity of these sensitive areas. The vegetation sits on the edge of these waterways and not only protects the perimeter from heat and evaporation, but also acts as a habitat for all the local animal species that depend on the wetland and waterway environments for their survival. Again, if Newcastle wants to restrict residents from creating lawns with the buffer zones, please lead by example. Um and you don't need this legislation to implement this kind of environmentally sensitive action. C four says, within the Indian Brook, Croton Gorge and my I M A uh watershed protection overlap district, the applicant shall be required to create replacement wetlands, restore, recreate, enhance existing wetlands or land buffer areas equal to twice the area, et cetera, et cetera. Um your suggestion suggests that future property owners should be told before investing in this area what their regulations are and not be offered the opportunity to destroy existing wetlands in the future. On the other hand, imposing these new regulations on existing property owners who own more than four acres, like Dave Valdez mentioned, is a taking or diminution of their investment, their property property values will be diminished. And if the legislation passes, their tax assessments, mine, should be reduced as well. Will the town board consider this as part of the deal? Residents have bought into the community with an understanding of their rights and you're absolutely curtailing them. Um I'm not gonna reiterate some of Dave Valdez's calculations, um but it does impact on our cost of maintenance um as well. And I wanna remind you all, I I did a study with an with overlay maps for the Croton reservoir. And it turns out that like seventy percent of Newcastle, as I look at it, um the land is included in the Croton uh reservoir watershed, and I did a map which I'm sharing with you. I hope I have enough, I'm gonna give you one Sabrina.
Thank you.
Um you'll see the outline of Newcastle, you'll see all the water basins in the area, some of which are reservoir basins and some of which are not.
You can take this one.
No, I do. Jeremy, can you split some out?
I will split it.
Um so I took the New York City Environmental Protection Water Supply map and the Westchester G I S
Cynthia, Cynthia, wait, Cynthia.
Drainage Divide, again.
Cynthia, wait, Cynthia. Nobody could hear you when you're over there, so you just.
Sorry, I took the New York City Environmental Protection Water Supply map and the Westchester G I S Drainage Divide Environmental Features map, and what I come up with, I don't know if you can see, cause my printer kind of ran out of ink, but um I highlighted Indian Brook Basin in, it looks like Canary Yellow. And then the green area is the the Croton Reservoir watershed. And you can see how much of Newcastle is included. And I might be off a mile or two, my computer skills, you know, not great, but roughly, so um because the Croton Reservoir watershed area covers so much of Newcastle, um you did mention the east of Hudson overlay. Um but I wonder, is it apples to apples, um is is that area um implementing the exact same regulations as you're expecting uh West End residents to to deal with? Um as an aside, projects like the Yashiva Commercial Solar Farm located in Newcastle directly abutting the Croton reservoir should be rejected immediately, and I saw the planning board start to look at that in their application. Um so from what I understand, the legislation is really about supporting the water quality and transmission of it into the Indian Brook reservoir. Our aquifers are mentioned here, but I don't know why they are in this document because aquifers are a town issue for town residents. Really, this legislation is about an intermunicipal agreement to protect Austin's reservoir water, so I don't really get that. So I'm urging you not to vote to pass this legislation today or in the near future, there are too many inconsistencies that have not been properly thought through. And the document really penalizes West End residents, the June thirtieth Albany deadline seems arbitrary to me. The residents deserve more time to get informed about the legislation, more opportunities to discuss it. There should even be honestly, for starters, a Millwood West End board meeting with the community to get everyone's ideas kind of consolidated before the town board public meeting. I still think we would benefit that from that kind of meeting and then bring that back to you. Um that's why that board exists, so please give the community more lead time and more public meetings with regard to this very important legislation. Thank you so much for your time, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, um I have uh something from another resident who's not able to be here because Croton is also having a meeting on the Hudson Wellness project today. I don't know if I should um submit it at the end of the meeting or read it on her behalf.
You can submit it or she or they can certainly email it to us.
It'll become part of the public record.
Um. It, yeah.
And when is the, at this point, hold on, I hope you'll extend, but at this point, when is the deadline for submission? I am extending.
Um we have not closed it, we are going to extend the public hearing through to June twenty fifth. I think, is that the Tuesday?
Mm-hmm.
June twenty fifth, then we'll probably leave it open for written comments. June twenty fifth, then we'll probably leave it open for written comments.
For a few days after that. Okay, here we go. Thank you.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Sabrina, just very quickly, what what is the east of Hudson on that map?
It's the east of Hudson is the green area.
Yeah.
So so at least geographically, it looks like more than half of Newcastle just talking solely about the uh septic issue. Um reportedly. Yeah, it was a septic issue if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
Requires every five years?
Three.
Three.
The the this 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 proposed overlay district is requiring every three years.
In New.
Correct.
In the east of Hudson, they're looking at once every five years.
Okay, so that's that's the difference between the two on that.
Yes.
Okay, um Bruce Tommen.
And one of the things he comes up with, that five thousand square foot issue, if I'm reading this correctly, Newcastle requires that same within east of Hudson watershed, so.
It's yes, it's actually.
This conservator that's being raised that five thousand square feet is stealing these rights from me, what about the rest of Newcastle? It looks at least especially on our east end, which is wide open, um and much larger lots than someone like me who lives close to town, multi-acre lots, they're subject to this five thousand square foot rule, right?
Correct. And 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 again, that rule is not to say you can't build it, but you need to put, for example, a silk fence around the area that you're disturbing so that the soil doesn't run off your property or into a water body or wetland.
Okay.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Good evening, sir.
Okay.
Sorry to keep you waiting, um go ahead.
That's okay. Thanks. Uh my name is Bruce Tommen. Uh my family and I have lived over fifty years at seventy eight Glendale Road. Uh so I and I guess we're one of the one hundred and two subject to this proposal.
The mic, just turn it, lift it up, yeah.
Yeah, perfect. Yeah, perfect.
There you go.
Better?
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry, I won't repeat what I said. Uh so you know, I'm sort of on the older side and all the environmental science is somewhat gone by me. But I don't understand why that boundary is there. Who figured out that boundary and why is it there as opposed to somewhere else?
You mean the green?
I mean the part that Newcastle has included in this overlay. Who figured out that boundary and why?
Boundary is actually determined by New York State DEC.
And what does the boundary represent?
The boundary is a hydrologic boundary of everything within that line flows to a specific point.
Which specific point is that?
The Indian Reservoir.
So you're telling you're saying that everything in that part of Newcastle feeds water.
Within that boundary.
Feeds water in from Newcastle into the Indian Brook.
Correct.
I see. But we don't get our drinking water from Indian Brook.
No, you do not.
We have nothing to do with that, right?
Correct.
Okay, so the towns that get their water from there are Austin and Croton.
Correct.
And neither of those places have passed this overlay, correct?
They're they're in the same process we are.
They haven't passed.
They have not passed.
And we don't know if they're gonna make any changes to it.
Not yet.
Okay. Now Cortland, you say passed it.
Correct.
Well, I'm not a really good techie, but I looked at the code of Cortland. I didn't find it. Maybe they're five months behind in putting it up there, but I didn't find it. So maybe I just I'm not good at it. Uh and I don't know what kind of changes they made, if they did pass it.
They didn't make any challenge changes. If a municipality is making changes to the overlay district, in order to make those changes, they have to inform the rest of the municipalities the changes they are making.
But they can make the changes.
Yeah, nobody can tell this Town Board what to do.
Okay. Ah, okay, so Cortland could have made changes.
Not without notifying us.
But we haven't seen the, it's not in the code though, it's not it's not online.
It it takes. Well, and it takes at least thirty days to be filed.
This thing is finalized in March.
But but it takes, it has to be filed with the New York State.
I I don't think Sabrina can speak to, I don't think Sabrina can speak to why.
Okay. I just think it raises a question about Cortland, that's the only point I make. I'll I'll move off that, okay. But my other point is though, with the two towns that are. Sorry. Remind me.
You have to be the techie, you have to be the techie.
And you're right. Sorry. The point really is that the two towns that are really most concerned with this issue have not acted. They haven't passed it. So we who are very mildly involved because the whole Indian Brook thing doesn't supply anybody any water supply in Newcastle. And the only other water supply involved in this supplies individual wells owned by the hundred and two property owners who don't want this to be passed. So what kind of sense does that make? My point is if we're gonna do something about this, I would suggest it be more prudent to wait to see what the two towns that really care about this do. Why should we be out front? And then they say, no, it's no dice, and we're sitting here looking likes whatever we're gonna be looking like. I my proposal would be you should at least defer until you see what those towns are gonna do. Whether they're gonna make changes, they'll inform you of the changes, then you can evaluate it. But why should we be the leader on something that has very little concern with Newcastle? Okay, first point. Second point is I just wanna come back to the boundary issue. You said this boundary that you've used is set up by New York State?
It it's not a boundary that I used. This this project is supported by New York State DEC. They have given the town of Cortland a grant on behalf of all five municipalities. The boundary was calculated by New York State DEC. There's specific language in here as to where it comes from. And it talks about if you disagree with the boundary, how it's interpreted, particularly in relation to roadways and lot lines. And if you are contesting the boundary and further refinement if you have a project. So that's what's set forth in the legislation.
So we don't have to accept the boundary?
It there is a boundary that is hydrologically determined. If you don't believe your property drains the way that this watershed is telling you it drains, you can document it and contest your location in the watershed.
But there's nothing in the overlay that permits anybody to do that.
It does.
In the overlay that you have here?
I if you look at boundaries.
Yes, could you?
If you uh which is section D.
Yes.
It talks about how they were created.
Well, let me just let me catch up to you again for a minute. Okay, so section D.
Number two, where uncertainty exists as to the boundaries shown on the watershed map, the following shall apply.
Yes.
So where area boundaries are indicated following a street, railroad, the highway line or centerlines thereof, such lines shall be construed as said boundaries. Where area boundaries are indicated as approximately following lot lines, such lot lines shall be construed to be said boundaries. However, a survey plat prepared by a registered land surveyor may be sub submitted to the municipality as evidence that one or more properties along these boundaries does not lie within the protected area.
Could you just tell me Sabrina, I'm sorry to be ignorant.
No.
But where do I find the DECP or whatever it's called? I'm sorry, the initials are not so good.
Wrong, wrong, conservator.
The state.
Thank you. Where do I find their determination of what that new part of Newcastle is included in this thing? How do I find that?
It right now, they provided this map.
But there's nothing in writing? They just gave you a map without any written information?
This is, I think we're.
I'm sorry.
It's hard to move this long.
Yes, yeah.
This is, uh this has been a map for how how many decades?
Decades.
So I it's it's the state has it and and I'm I'm understanding this correctly, just using this as an example. Um Sabrina, if you live square in the middle of Mount Kisco, you're not challenging the east of Hudson, you can't, you're you're there. And if you wanna challenge it, it's someone living along the border. But even if you did.
Let let's talk about the east of Hudson watershed for a minute because there was a big concern about Millwood where that boundary line runs directly through. Any application that we that the town receives for to do something in Millwood that is in proximity to the interpretation of that line is submitted to DEP for determination of jurisdiction. Because because the town is not equipped to go out there and do the hydrology on an on a on a private property. But it's DEP's watershed and they will make that determination.
So I I think if there's an issue, it's sort of figured out through state legislator about the the boundaries or in the DEP.
Well, no, if 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 somebody is within this watershed and they don't agree, they obtain a survey.
It comes down to DEP and the and.
Not the DEP, they would hire a surveyor to 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 define their lot lines in relation to the watershed line because a watershed is determined based off of topography. Right? And so you may have a high point on your property if you're on the edge and you or you may have a ridge in between your property, half your property falls this way, half your property falls that way. This gives definition as to how that property should be considered in totality in or in totality out. So it's really left up to the professionals who do the delineation to define the delineation on an individual property. Because this mapping is only good like up to two feet, maybe more. It you know, like the the you can't rely on a paper on a map that's on a screen. You have to do more field analysis if you're gonna contest it. But like you said, if you're in Mount Kisco, you're definitely within the east of Hudson watershed.
So this is only for people on the border, so if there's an issue with that, maybe we can discuss that offline because it's just gonna.
Okay. Alright, I'm 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 sort of over that topic. I I don't understand it still, but it seems to me that I think David mentioned something, the Alapara Circle is not in it, but Alapara is in it. It doesn't sort of ring common sense wise the construction of these lines that include places and don't include other places. Okay, that's the only point I make. Uh the other thing is is I got this chart tonight. And then I heard Mr. Skiretta?
No, actually that's my partner, I'm Mike Stravagi, Lino is my partner, I'm here.
You're a lawyer?
I am.
Ah, I I should have guessed because you say the chart, we can't rely upon it because it's not complete or something?
Well, it's a reference, it's a reference tool.
But we can't rely on it?
Right.
Ah, okay.
He has to say that.
I understand.
It it's not legal.
The problem is that.
It's not a legal document.
I got, I understand that. But what I don't understand is, you see, it I understand where it talks about the Indian Brook overlay. But when it talks about the code, I mean, you gotta be more than a lawyer to find where it says that. Like you say, the twelve uses as listed for buffers, that these are all, Newcastle doesn't allow it anyhow. But there's no site to it. How do you go look that up? How do I know that? I mean, that's just a a not a helpful statement to me. I'd like to read where it says every one of those twelve buffer uses are allowed because pesticides, for example, which are not allowed, that's one of the uses, right? So let me read you something from the code that I found about that. This is the wetlands code, section one thirty seven dash four, chapter one thirty seven. It says the following. Activities permitted by right. Let me get back to the microphone. Sorry. The following activities are permitted by right within any wetlands or wetlands buffer. And I'm quoting, J, depositing herbicides, pesticides or fertilizers in a wetlands buffer in accordance with the manufacturer's recommendations and accepted horticultural practices. That's what the code says now. It does not prohibit pesticides like this chart says or like what the folks proposing is. It just doesn't because that's what the code says. Something completely different, something that actually makes sense. You comply with the manufacturer's code of requirements, which presumably are probably cleared by the state, and you're good to go. Nobody makes blanket things like this, don't do this, don't add a new lawn. That's another one, don't add a new lawn. Why? What's wrong with a new lawn, it makes things nice instead of brown. Unless there's a showing that these things will harm the environment in some way, it doesn't make any sense. So at a minimum, you should have a permit procedure for each one of these buffer things that says, okay, I can show you that I'm complying with the pesticides the manufacturer, they've been approved and I'm not harming the environment. I can show you that my additional lawn is not gonna harm the environment. I can show you all these other things that in fact they're not gonna harm it. But that's not what this does. This says no, end of story. No opportunity for anybody in the West End to show there's no harm. That's just not right, it's not fair and it doesn't make a lot of sense to me. Okay. Impervious surfaces, new impervious surfaces. None of those are allowed either in the buffer zone. But I read somewhere else that you're allowed to do impervious surfaces if you're buil building a five thousand square foot something so long as you comply with certain rules and regulations. Okay, I understand the reason for rules and regulations that are required, but that's not what the buffer thing says. Buffer thing says, no, you can't do it. No impervious surfaces. It's just not consistent. In a much larger project, I can do it if it's okay with the rules and regulations, but for a small little impervious thing, let me give you an example. Let's say you got an older person, needs to build a walkway, pave a walkway to get access to his home. They can't walk anymore on the uneven ground, they have to have pavements. Okay? So they say, okay, I wanna build, I said, no, you can't do that. Flat. Well, could you, could I at least explain to you why I wanna build a pavement? And can I please explain to you why it won't hurt the environment? No, the buffer says you can't do it. You're stuck. You're too old, but we don't really care. That's not right, it's not fair. Alright, Yolanda, what's there? The so the two things I would like to sort of summarize. One, there should be a permit for all these things and not blanket those. And two, we should defer until the towns that really care, that really are affected, which we are not, approve this project. And then we can make whatever changes we want and tell them we made the changes and then we do it. Okay? The other thing, last thing, last thing. Everybody so far has spoken and said that the people on the West End are pretty environmentally conscious. I think that's probably true. We're in a genteel kind of area. It's we moved there because we wanna be sort of like in the country, we care about that kind of stuff. Okay, there's not a single bit of indication in this overlay or in anything that Sabrina has said, excuse me, I call you by your first name.
You may.
Thank you. Uh to suggest there's a problem with the water courses in our area. That anybody in our area in the West End of a hundred and two property have caused a problem. So this whole overlay thing is a solution in search of a problem where there is none. Why would you discriminate against a bunch of people who live well, don't bother anybody and are not offending anybody? It's just not, it's just not the right thing to do. So that's all I understand.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for listening.
If if I make a may make a correction, in the environmental environmental overlay district, we do require two to one wetland mitigation.
Okay, so I think so that's important.
What?
Oh.
We do it currently.
Do it.
Yeah, we do right now.
Okay, okay. I one more thing I'd like to ask if I may, I'm sorry for.
Okay.
It it's a.
It's just other people are reading.
I it's it's a two second thing.
But go ahead, go ahead.
Could I ask if the you could redo this chart? When you identify, when you say it's allowed by the code currently, if you could please just cite to the code that you're relying upon to say that.
Yeah, apparently.
And then we could look at it.
But okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you. Um and next we have Yolanda Zinnan. Sorry, I'm not good at reading.
She's on, she's on.
Oh, she's on.
That's.
Yeah.
So um.
I'm here. Yeah, so what I mean, I agree with everything everyone is saying. Yeah. Everything, everything they say. Um you know, one of the things that I wanted to point out is if this change is benefiting everyone, you know. um why are we only targeting specific properties? It just seems unfair. Um this is certainly gonna impact our property if we wanna make any updates to our home. It just seems like it's going to be an entire process and probably more costly. Um it will probably impact the value of my house as well. And you know, I feel like. And you know, I feel like this evening has been about everyone voicing their concerns and us opposing this. But unfortunately, it doesn't really seem like you're very receptive to all of our concerns, like if we are all voicing that we don't like this, we don't agree with it, are you just going to move forward with it anyway?
I think we're we're trying to all understand what what the residents of this area are saying, um, and we're trying to square that with you know, what the existing law is and what the real changes are, so but but we're listening to you, I mean, I um, I agree that there should have been more notice for the residents, so I wish that had happened, um. I, um, you know, I I think that we we want to hear from you, we wanna hear what you're saying. Um, I think there wasn't enough opportunity for the residents to be really clearly informed of the requirements that currently exist and what the real um differences are between those requirements and this law. So that that's what I think, and yes, we we definitely wanna hear from you. And uh, we are going to be considering everything we hear. You know, most definitely, I just, you know, so I hope that answers your question.
It does, um, and I I'm glad to hear that, yes, you will take it into deep consideration, um, but really, what does that mean and I I'm glad to hear that, yes, you will take it into deep consideration, um, but really, what does that mean and you know, one of the comments some people made is that this feels really rushed. Um, and I don't want it to for us tonight to voice our concerns and then for us to again, get a late notification, maybe have missed the notification because we didn't see it, didn't have enough time to prepare didn't attend a meeting and then were left in the dark or blamed saying, oh, well, you just didn't show up or you didn't respond. So I want there to be clear communication with all of the residents and really have us understand what the impact to our property is going to be to us, I mean, this is this is our lives. Yeah, you know, this, um, another comment a lot of people made is that, you know, maybe it's not impacting you guys, but this is impacting us. So, um, we want clear transparency.
We want transparency.
We deserve that.
Okay, thank you. Um, I don't have any more cards, uh, is there anyone else in person who would like to speak who hasn't spoken already? Yeah, I know, but I'm just pushing up here, um, we can go back, but we would let other people who haven't spoken yet get get a chance.
Just Nicole still here, she had actually been in the chat.
Uh, she left, so, yeah.
What about, what about the thirty two people with their hands raised?
Okay. Yeah, I'm getting to that, I'm I'm about to get to that, well, I don't know who came first, uh, Garrett Ceruley. So please unmute yourself.
Yeah.
Hello.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, uh, Garrett Ceruley, uh, fifty six Glendale Road, my brother Mark and I uh, trustees for that property for our ninety five year old mother, Laura Ceruley, who you've heard. Um, I just like, I agree with everything that has been said so far, um, uh, the lack of notice is really egregious um, and and I'm sure you can understand how that does not inspire trust in this process. Um, the lack of clarity on what is changing versus what is existing also does not inspire trust and and leaves all of these property owners confused as to what they're gonna be expected to do and how much it's gonna cost under these new regulations. Uh, so one of the things that I would ask, and I think was asked earlier as well, is um, we would all like to see a breakdown of what's existing and proposed and then what that means to homeowners. Uh, so for example, um, I think most, if not all of these homes, uh, are are within the buffer zone that's defined. Um, and I understand that that means there's gonna be additional requirements, um, and things like the impervious surface, things like that. What does that mean? So if my mother needs to replace the driveway on her house, which is, you know, uh, probably one of the projects that we'll have to do already difficult when you're her age, um, to have that kind of project, um, completed. What other steps are gonna be required? What other costs are they gonna be? Um, and and I know that it's been said, well, you know, the town has existing regulations that are, um, you know, very stringent, these have already been in place. Which brings me right back to why, why are we doing this? And if there are differences, then we need to know what those are. This this definitely, to me, seems like it's some form of eminent domain taken because there's impacted homeowners, impacted uh values and impact to, um, you know, their rights on the properties that does not seem to be compensated. Um, and then that brings me to another question that was also asked earlier. Is there a proposed tax reduction for the impacted property owners? And and if there is, what's the formula? What will that look like? Um, so property owners have an understanding of, um, how that would offset the burdens of the new regulations and if that's not under consideration, then why not? Um, and the last question I have, which I I'd love to hear is, and I I again, I think this was mentioned earlier. Are Newcastle and the other towns set to receive any state or federal funding by passing these regulations? Is that part of, um, you know, calculations for doing this? I know we talked about water quality, we all agree that's important. Um, I think everybody who's lived in that neighborhood, my family's owned that property for over forty years, I grew up there. Um, we've all tried to be very good stewards of the environment on our properties, right? It it's one, it's the right thing to do, but two, self-interest, right? We try to keep our properties up, keep nature up, that's why we moved there. Um, but the rush to do this and do this now, uh, makes us all wanna understand i- is there or is there funding stake? Aside from the stated requirements or needs to, you know, urgently protect the watershed. So those are the questions that I think I know I would like to see answered and and I'm pretty sure that most other property owners would like to see as well. Oh, one other thing before I finish. Just going back to, this has been brought up, but the lack of precision in the language for the proposed proposed regulations is really also concerning. Um, I just lack of definitions between private and public things, the wellhead's a great example of that. Um, and 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 then that definition of the uh new burdens that will be imposed on on the homeowners and property owners.
Are you referring to the definitional section in the legislation?
Uh, I'm yes, I'm referring to what little I was able to read of the regulations in the time I had between my mom finding out and this meeting. I'm Um, but I think we've already covered that lack of notice and lack of clarity, um, and it sounds like the town is committing to do better.
Yeah, okay. Alright, sorry, it's hard to tell when you're online if you're, um if you're if you're concluding, is that? Okay, alright.
Yes, uh, I I'm concluded, but could you could you answer any of those questions now or or could we expect a follow up in writing?
Um, I, so can you summarize your questions? You're talking about grants, there are always grants available to the town, I
Of course, yeah.
To my knowledge, there are no grants that were directly connected
The town of
to Sabrina, you mentioned one grant.
Yeah, the town of, yeah, the town of Cortland received a grant from New York State um, for the five municipalities to create the overlay protection district, I don't know how much was received offhand.
But it's for the purposes of doing of doing this, what we're doing.
Of of creating this, yes, they the the consultant that was hired was Weston and Sampson, uh, the town of Cortland facilitated the consultant. Um, they received the grant, facilitated the consultant, who, um, who did all the legwork comparing and contrasting the each municipality's regulations.
So i- is it fair to say that those monies were directed towards, um, creating the legislation and creating the
Correct, there's no
the various standards with consultants and their lawyers, et cetera.
Correct.
We're not being financially incentivized.
So we're not getting money for anything
No, we are not.
unconnected to the legislation.
No, we are not.
Okay, so there's no
So the answer is no to that.
No funding tied to passing it, and I'm hoping some folks
No, and I was not aware of any such funding, but I, you know, we just confirmed that. Um, what were your other questions?
Yeah, so, um, the other questions were, um, uh tax relief, tax reductions for the impacted properties, uh, is that on the consideration?
That's right, no, we have not discussed that. No, it is, no, it is not.
Yeah, we just changed legislation recently, and to be very, very brief, we just changed some legisla- legislation recently about uh, how people can uh control water on their property so it doesn't damage their neighbor's property because someone in in Newcastle in the hamlet of Chappaqua had their basement flooded repeatedly, but their neighbors were following the regulations, they were using their property as they had a right to do and it was horrifically adversely affecting their neighbor's property, but didn't do anything to them, it probably actually had more value in their value in their property. So, uh, there's no tax break for that person now that going forward, any person who wants to, uh, build or or disturb the land um, is more limited because it protects their neighbor's property, they benefit because their neighbor can't do the same back to them. So I, you know, I think, you know, it seems like, it's seeming to everyone here that the sky is falling and it's anything but that. Um, when we look at the legislation as it stands now and we look at current regulations, we look at the history of how we changed into the regularity. This happens relatively frequently across all municipalities, things are changed. Um, and and this is not inconsistent with that, especially not inconsistent with what we see that's in the east of Hudson Watership. So I I I can only speak for myself, I don't think there's any tax break you're gonna get from this, just like your neighbor in the hamlet of Chappaqua did not get a tax break because he or she cannot do the things he could have before, that ultimately, unfortunately, one particular circumstance really horrifically flooded and damaged his neighbor's property repeatedly. So I I think again, it's, we'll we'll try to answer some of these questions and make it more clear, but I I also think we have to be very realistic, understand what this is and what isn't, and we have to do a better job to make sure that you understand that as well. And I hope so, you know, and then get away, I mean, that is sincere, we have to make sure it's clear what really is happening and what isn't.
No, I I totally agree, notification, clarity are are some of the main issues that, um, that all of us have. But to to use your example, well, if 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 that was my property that was impacted by my neighbor, I have the option suing them. Um, right, because that's between two homeowners, in this case, we're talking about the town making changes that substantially and materially impact a small subset of the town, right?
I'm just giving one second, I wasn't clear, that was for the entirety of the municipality, it wasn't just for the neighbors, it was a new legislation and change of the statutes uh, that that regulated, so, no, that wasn't, and and this was just an example of how the neighbors impacted each other, but this was for the entire municipality, it wasn't between two parties. Certainly have a right to sue, but it was for the entire municipality.
Okay, but but you guys, A, the point I think you've heard repeatedly is that especially since we do not understand the whole impact and the difference between what exists and what's being proposed, right? There's no real breakdown of that. Um, the question remains, you know, what is this impact gonna be to our abilities to maintain and improve our properties and to the value of those properties, and nobody, obviously you guys don't have an answer to that, um, and I wouldn't expect you to at this meeting. But going back to the tax relief, yeah, I I've actually, in fact, I live somewhere where that is part of the deal, if you live in a conservation zone you get a tax rebate, right? There is an amount that is removed from your tax bill um, as part of the burden and the cost to, you know, follow those regulations, keep, uh, you know, keep, um, keep the environment um, just seeing all that kinda stuff, follow what the regulations. It's not unheard of, maybe it is in New York, but, um, you know, I I guess my question is, is so if this all happens and, um, you know, all these homeowners, their their properties or values are negatively impacted then is that a town just saying, hey, well, that's just too bad, it's just part of the regulations we passed? Um, so, you know, I I I think that that is, um, uh, that is just, that is really, um, not fair to consider that is the the burden on these hundred and two property owners, um, and we
I I think you're right that it's important for people to better understand what the regulations currently are to to really, um, understand the the relative, um, differences.
Mm-hmm.
So in any event, I'm sorry to cut you short, we have, we still have one other person here, um, we will not be considering, uh, reduction in taxes.
Mm-hmm.
Was there, um, did you have a third question?
Uh, so the last, really the last point was to, uh, provide that clarity and that breakdown of existing versus new proposed regulations and your town property.
Right, I think we should do that.
Is it?
I think we should do that even though, even though it's clear to some, but it's obviously not clear to everyone, I think that would be very important. So, we will attempt to make that, to make that clearer, yes, okay, thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
Um, next is Joanne Landau. Joanne, you can go ahead if you can unmute yourself.
Thank you, um, first, uh, good evening at ten oh eight, thanks everybody for their, uh, hard work, because I know it's late, so I will, uh, try and keep it short. Um, so I am Joanne Landau and we recently, I'm sort of a new purchaser, so contrary to most of the people who have spoken who are, um, old timers, so to speak. Um, so we just purchased on two Alapartis Circle, so we are the circle that is not yet, um, included in, uh, the overlay. However, we are in the watershed, um, and so experienced just in the short three months that we lived in Newcastle you know, a variety of things, and I'll go into it in a second. Um, but what I think you're hearing tonight, just kind of listening, um, because I keep hearing those on the board sort of saying, I'm not sure I really understand this. Um, there's no difference, hardly any difference between this and existing code. What I think you're hearing is that people in this area feel that because of the nature of our properties, um, we already do a lot and so and and many times we're feeling like it's overload already and now, yeah, it might just be two more things and it's not that much different, but it's sort of more and more, and I think what people are trying to say is whoa, we kinda need if anything the direction to move back a little. Not not just sort of this constant forward and as one person said, you know, searching for, you know uh, a problem that doesn't exist is 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 a bit strange. Um, in terms of, uh, you know, just some some, the one legal thing I'll say is that, you know, a lot of people have alluded to it, you know, I'm not a lawyer but I certainly, um, know a lot about it and, you know, there 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 is some question here, when one takes away something what one gets on on the other, you know, on the taking thing. And, you know, you just might wanna think through it because obviously as owners, we have to think through it, like what should be our next steps depending on circumstances? So, you might not be prepared to do something, you know, um, to give a tax benefit, as just was the recent answer. But you know, maybe when you find out that there are other circumstances, it might have to be something you need to consider if if this is what you absolutely want.
I'm not sure I understand, could you be clearer about what what you're saying?
Yeah. Yeah, um, then in terms of, um, sort of my story, this is a very silly little story, you know, by mistake, because there was a misunderstanding, we cut down some trees we gave money for the tree bank and then we planted some grass on 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 the suggestion of of the the folks in the department. Um, and then came back the suggestion, well, how about planting wildflowers? And I'm like, no, I can't plant wildflowers because the lady who lived here before was a horticulturist and lived there for forty years and has the most amazing flowers, you know, I, they're just unbelievable, you would never want sort of wildflowers, which is why they're called wildflowers, to overgrow these things. Um, and nobody has any bad intent in these kind of things, that's, you know, I totally understood. But it's just that I think people in these areas, it's very specific to the houses, the nature of the properties, and that's what I think you're sensing tonight. To have a sort of cookie cut overlay is is a very difficult thing to do in these circumstances, so I hope you'll, you know, consider all of these comments and, um, we look forward to, uh, working through it with you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome to town.
Thank you.
Um. Okay, uh, I don't see anyone else online, is there anyone else online back there that that you can see? Okay. Alright, um, well, this will conclude the public hearing, uh, there's one more hand, um. I'll be very brief. Okay. You can, uh, tell me your your name and
My name is Marjorie Topman, Bruce Topman's wife, we've been
Can you stop that, because we're
T O P M A N seventy eight Glendale Road.
Okay.
We've been residents here since nineteen seventy two. I have just really one comment. There seems to be an overlay of restrictions on all of our properties, I'm speaking of the one hundred and two properties. We have people in our area who have one acre, a few acres, and others that have hundreds. And yet we are all, will be possibly, um, uphold into regulations for everyone. My husband and I are two people. We travel at least four months of the year, and yet we are now required And yet we are now required to have our septic tanks. Pumped every three years, whereas our septic people tell us every four to five years because of our usage. That's a blanket for everyone and it's not just the septic system. It's all these other regulations, we all have different sized properties. We feel and you can hear, there's a lot of disgruntled here, and this all really started with sunshine. We feel we have been, we have been neglected and we have not been heard. And things have been forced upon us because we don't have the density that other people have in this community. And we do not feel heard, we do not feel cared about. Our road is the last road to be plowed. During a snowstorm. Uh when our our uh electricity goes down, we are probably one of the last people because of our density. And I understand.
And we don't want those roads, okay, town.
Okay, okay, I understand that. But I do feel that you have to understand that we are not heard. And it's very frustrating. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay. All right, I think we have heard from everyone and uh we we do appreciate all of you coming out and we are going to take these comments into serious consideration. We are getting written comments as well. We're going to keep the, well, we'll do this formally, but this is not the last public hearing on this matter. So um we are going to, I want to use the right words, we are not closing the public hearing, we are.
Arrjuring the public.
We are adjourning the public meeting. Um. Until on Tuesday, June twenty fifth. So may I have a motion to do that, please?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
We will be sending out notices to all one hundred and.
Hang on everybody, wait, what?
We will be sending out notices to all one hundred and three parcels. Um just alerting you, reminding everybody when the adjournment is going to be. Uh so that you have more time and uh if you'd like, we're happy to put the uh, you can put the uh the legislation back in it. Just so if you didn't get a chance to take a look at it at this time, you'll have it.
With the map, please, it's not clear in your last distribution, then it was just one hundred and two, it made it sound like townwide.
We can give the list.
Okay.
Okay, it's no, yeah, it's no.
So make that clearer and uh.
Okay.
Give them the map. Okay. Can that get sent out really soon?
We can only, we can only, can't send it out sooner than tomorrow, I'm sorry.
Really, okay.
Like ten sixteen, no.
I uh.
Yesterday?
You can, why don't we do it, you can.
I know Lauren can, let's let's be honest.
Okay.
See, that's much with the difference between what we have now, which which seems adequate.
We're going to work on that, yeah.
And and as you mentioned, cite the code so we can go look up like the actual wording differences.
Okay.
Cite the existing code.
Yeah, that would be helpful. For those who don't hear, someone is suggesting that we uh cite the existing code, so yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Uh Vicki, I mean, would it be reasonable to try to set up a Q and A session to get some basic questions answered? Um by this phone. Okay, okay.
Um well, we can think of what what the best way is to to do something like that.
Okay.
Yeah, maybe there's a better way, but um we can talk about that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you everybody, thank you very much for coming out.
Thank you, thank you for coming.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Let me see.
You picked a fun way to fill in for me, you know, was he, you better be giving me for lunch tomorrow.
I still wanted to take a pic of him on lunch.
Lots of space.
I'm just gonna, I'm gonna text them right now and tell me, tell me those, those are consent.
How we up to.
He'll know.
Okay, we are up to the consent agenda, everybody.
So.
All. Holly, would you start with our consent agenda?
German style, Holly.
All right.
I. I I move to, and the items one through seven is listed on the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Shh.
I'm sorry, we have to finish our meeting.
Gave them their claims.
Okay, everyone, we're continuing our meeting, so um.
We're still here, we can't go, man, please, let us, let us move along.
I'm talk.
There's a lot of talking.
I move to approve the payment of claims amount of five hundred seventy five thousand seven hundred ninety eight dollars fifty cents listed on the summary pre-check writing report detailed after detailed report in June seventh, two thousand twenty four. Chester, you printed and distributed each payment list on Wednesday, June twelve, twenty twenty four.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. Um I move uh.
Did you do the other order, please?
Would you mean that, I thought, I thought we were doing that.
No, we don't.
We are, okay, okay.
But I have, I would like to, I'm gonna vote no when I would like to explain myself.
I I move to uh make the following resolution, I move without the following resolution, pardon me. Um now therefore be resolved, alright.
Yeah, it seems like there's a beginning part of that we're missing.
The author therefore be resolved, the town board hereby establishes a committee on inclusion and belonging. It shall be comprised of up to nine members to serve in staggered terms as follows. Pat Pollock and uh Michelle Seligman, uh two years each effective June twelfth, this year June eleventh, twenty twenty six. Riyut Tara Dash Nationali Batatari, and I apologize if I'm really not to entitle on her name, I'm sorry. Tara Ramirez, Rhonda Sowerborn, uh the prior, Rhonda is two years effective June twelfth, twenty twenty four. And the earlier two I mentioned, and then three year terms for the others effective June twelfth, twenty twenty four to June eleven, twenty twenty seven.
May I have a second? Second. Okay, we're gonna have a little discussion first before voting. First, um uh the differences in years are just because we want the the members to be staggered, so people don't end their terms all at the same time.
Okay. Uh very briefly, I know we're here late and I apologize, I just wanted to say, um I spent a great deal of time this weekend thinking about my role on the town board. And came to the realization that on this matter, I might stand alone. The five of us are by no means required to agree all the time and I think this should be encouraged and respected. Especially as we embrace viewpoint diversity, transparency and working together through disagreement, which I think we do an excellent job of actually. Um while I very much appreciate our residents' willingness to volunteer for this committee and their desire to bring people together, I am voting no. After the inauguration, a decision was made to rebrand the CREI and create a new committee that focused on inclusion and belonging. I do think this is a positive step away from the controversial past of the CREI. And I think more emphasis should be placed on fun per cultural events that bring our community together. But I am not convinced this iteration is the way to achieve that goal. The town did post the application and we interviewed some of the residents that applied. Later this winter, the board was informed that there had been several meetings with residents that might be a good fit for this new committee. I know this took a lot of effort, but I was uncomfortable with the way that it was organized, I voiced my concerns and we moved on. Some weeks later, the town board was provided with a list of names for the new committee and once again, I voiced my concerns. I am troubled by connections too and supportive Westpac and I believe that public comments have been made that are disqualifying. Additionally, our last CREI committee created unnecessary tension culminating in mass resignations because they wouldn't condemn antisemitism after October seventh. If we are going forward with a new committee aimed at fostering belonging and inclusion, we should start fresh. New mission statement, new board, new goals and new objectives and there should be ideological diversity among the members, not just as it pertains, not just as it pertains to the Israel Hamas world. I do not support reconstituting this committee right now as is. I think this mission statement is vague, as are the goals and objectives. Without understanding what the expectations, limits and boundaries of this new committee will be, if all short of providing me the necessary clarity to feel comfortable adopting this resolution. Ensuring the right balance on this committee is critical to its success. If it has been hard to find residents that want to volunteer, maybe now is not the right time for its formation. There are many other organized groups in town that can assist in planning cultural community events that don't carry the stigma and controversies associated with this one. And I just wanna thank my town board members for giving me the opportunity to speak on this. We had conversations and everyone has been very respectful and I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you, does anyone else want to make any comments?
I just wanna say that um I'm very happy that these six individuals have stepped forward and offered themselves and their expertise um to our town. Um a town that sometimes can feel more divided than it has for me, uh living here over twenty years. Um I think the time is now to seat this committee and to rely on the expertise of these six people. Who over the years that they've lived here, um have had each of them a huge impact on the people around them. Um and have offered themselves in very generous ways. Um and they are continuing to do that for our town, so I'm thrilled um that they're willing to do that and I think that they will. Um having spoken to them at length, um really offer a warm, embracing, understanding, um tolerant. Um approach to residents of Newcastle, so I thank them.
Alright, now I feel compelled if two of you have spoken, I'll I'll briefly share my views. Uh there, I I I did share some trepidation and concerns about this committee. Um with that being said, it's, I think my role as a legislator to not always agree with people who might be in a committee. Um whether that's one, two, three or more, but to find ways in a committee like this, especially at a time when the divisiveness. And people backed into their own respective corners, that I may very well disagree with another side wholeheartedly. Uh is the time to try to talk and figure things out. Um if I wanted to just have an echo chamber, that's pretty easy to do, but that's not my job. My job is to try to facilitate, even if I disagree, a conversation so that we can be in a better place, whatever that is, and it certainly can be better than it is now. So um an imperfect world, an imperfect solution, but I think this is the right way to move forward in the healthiest way possible. Uh otherwise, we're going to just sink in our own book and not find ways to work out whatever it may be, which is well beyond Israel and Hamas. Uh we have other issues that um impact adversely and infect all our communities and this is a way to embrace the better and the good, to find the right way forward.
Holly, would you like to make a comment? I don't mean to to single anyone out, you don't have to, by any means.
No, I'm nice. I am very appreciative to the folks who are willing to be on this committee for their. Willingness to work with folks that they know they may not get along with for the management of our community. So I am extremely grateful and I very much hope um that this committee. Can erase all of the 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 baggage, you might say, that some of the previous iterations may have had. Um so I'm very optimistic and very grateful.
Yeah, and I guess I might as well add, I did allude to this at the beginning of the meeting, I I was probably pretty abstract about it. But um you know, we've had really challenging, awful geopolitical issues going on in the Middle East. That have really roiled communities and it certainly has had an impact here. And um it has caused rifts and division here. And if I see people who are on polar opposite sides of this issue. Tell us that they want to work together. The way I look at it is who are we to stand in their way? If these are people who would normally be on opposite sides of a war, isn't that what we want? We want these different peoples who are at war with each other to work and live together. So if there are people in our community representing that who are telling us they want to work together, I'm not going to get in their way. And I think we need to be a little bit courageous. Um we're we're only human, so yes, we could fail spectacularly. But uh should we be afraid of that? I say no. And um it is time to allow people to work together and to come together. That's my view, I respect everybody on this board, I I do respect, Ally, I respect your your feelings, I understand them. And um and it's okay, it really is, I think that, I hope that all of the fears and trepidation that is out there. Will be alleviated, I mean, these are people who really do want to work together. So I say let's give it a chance and uh vote, so all in favor?
Aye.
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 Nay.
One nay, okay, very well, thank you everybody.
I'm go ahead.
So Jen, you wanna?
I move to accept the retirement of Patricia Patricia Cortuccio Minioni. From the position of Senior Office Assistant Office Manager within the Controller Department effective June twenty ninth, twenty twenty four. The town would like to thank Patty for her twenty years of dedicated service.
Thank you, Patty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Holly, second.
Second.
Go out of order.
Sorry, I was waiting for it, I'm eager.
Uh, okay.
I said second.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 I move to authorize the reacquaintment of the following individuals to the climate smart communities pass course for a two-year term. Effective April thirteen, twenty twenty three to April twelve, twenty twenty five. Um see names below.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um.
Proud of me?
Yes.
Um.
Do you want me to go?
Ally, you haven't gone yet, you got it.
Because Jeremy stepped in out of order.
Thanks, Jeremy.
You're up to five.
I move to accept the resignation of Andrea Meacom as co-chair of the Airport Advisory Board effective June fifth, twenty twenty four. The town would like to thank Andrea for her service.
Thank you and second.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea.
Thank you.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 I move to appoint James Benton as co-chair of the Airport Advisory Board for the remainder of his term effective through February thirteenth, twenty twenty five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And thank you for stepping up.
Thank you.
And I move to authorize the extension of the term limit of work for Matthew Hernandez as social media coordinator for a period of thirteen weeks from June tenth through September thirteenth, twenty twenty four. For a total stipend amount of four thousand sixty dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Holly.
Holly, wanna put the word?
I move to accept a proposal from Marist Cole for a community-wide survey regarding the use of lands surrounding the Chappaqua train station. Not to exceed the amount of sixty eight thousand eight hundred dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to appoint Lori Morton as Chair of the Beautification Advisory Board for the remainder of her three-year term effective through August thirty first, twenty twenty six.
Wait, October?
October thirty first, twenty twenty six.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, Lori.
Thank you, Lori.
Thank you.
She's doing a great job.
Yes, thank you. Um.
Do you want me to go?
Wants to go, Jeremy, do you wanna?
I move to authorize extension of appointment for DeSaba Owen McMcPee DeDejan, Dejan. Who serves as student intern with the Engineering Department for additional eighteen days for a total amount of one thousand two hundred dollars effective through July twenty sixth, twenty twenty four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, I move uh.
We just one more.
I move to authorize the hiring of the following individuals uh to serve as recreation attendants within the Recreation and Parks Department to serve as a two thousand twenty four camp staff as listed below.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, may I have a motion to?
Next one.
Hang on.
One from our executive session.
I thought we weren't going to.
Um can I see what that is? Ah, okay. Okay.
Alright, uh yes, uh I move to accept the probation failure termination of employee number three zero six nine, motor equipment operator within the Department of Public Works effective June twenty first, twenty twenty four. Close of business.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and now um may I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Sorry, just one more of the chargers, um we can just get a motion to approve um the, to accept the proposal from INF.
Oh, we did not get that, the chargers.
Amsterdam, Amsterdam and Gdenny.
Oh gosh, sorry, thank you, Lauren.
The Amsterdam, um so may I, may I have a motion to approve uh the chargers, um.
Or Amsterdam.
As discussed in the Amsterdam Park and uh in Agdenney Park.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, Lauren.
That was.
Good catch, Lauren.
Um.
Sufficient and form.
I move to call Lauren for her good catch.
First.
Lauren, Lauren.
And second.
Second.
Well done, Lauren.
Okay, so we move to adjourn?
That, we got a motion to adjourn, and the second?
Yeah. So so moved.
Oh.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned, thank you and good night.